Good evening. The July 8th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffordan.
Here.
Councilmember Rebel.
Here.
We have a quorum present, both on the dais and in the chamber, and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are three. We start with a proclamation of the Decalogue Society of Lawyers Day. I believe they're not individuals here to receive this, and so I won't read it in full. The presentation will occur at a later time. But just to kind of give you a flavor, whereas the Decalogue Society of Lawyers was founded in 1934 to fight antisemitism and all forms of discrimination and intolerance, and will celebrate its 90th anniversary on July 11th, 2024, and so on and so forth. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim July 11th, 2024 as Decalogue Society of Lawyers Day, and express congratulations on its 90th anniversary to its outgoing president, Judge Megan Goldish, to its incoming president, attorney Joel Brookman, and to all members of its executive committee and board of managers. Additionally, the next proclamation declares, proclaims this to be Parks and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Evanston, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; and whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives, whose lead we take sometimes, has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore I do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Evanston, and recognize the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. And just on that note, want to say a tremendous thank you to our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services team led by Director Audrey Thompson, to our Parks and Recreation Board, and to the many staff members and volunteers who make their parks and recreation efforts here in the community really a jewel of living in Evanston.[220.29][220.29](APPLAUSE). And our, the final item of my announcements and proclamations is kind of an off-menu item in the sense that it's, there's not a proclamation, but it's, it's really a celebration. And I just want to start, the genesis of this was Rob Beatty called me on behalf of the Levy Center Foundation to talk about the extraordinary success of athletes affiliated with the Levy Center at the Illinois Senior Olympics, the national competition as well. And he said, "Why don't we invite some of these successful athletes to city council to recognize them for their achievements?" And I said, "Yeah, great, let's do that." And in talking with Rob and with Judy Newton of the Levy Senior Center Foundation, I just thought it was a good opportunity to thank the foundation for the work it does across a number of domains. Obviously, the foundation supports what goes on at the Levy Center, paying for things like furniture and renovations and whatnot, but they're just pivotal to so much of the programming that goes on there, to the arts programming, the visiting, the Northwestern Wirth Theater and Northlight, all the lectures that they are involved in facilitating and putting on and supporting and transporting our older adults to, the free concerts, to the variety of different athletic events, not only the basketball, but also pickleball and tennis. And again, you might, those of you who are here could look around and see a lot of medals around next in this chamber, which is a reflection of the success of that program, but also the partnerships that have been established with Evanston Grows and with the Garden Club, and across all these different domains of life, whether artistic or athletic or community service or social justice or outdoors or, or gardening. The Levy Center and the staff there and the Levy Center Foundation and the volunteers there are just doing extraordinary work to build a vibrant, vibrant place, which is a hub of thriving older adult community. And so I wanted to just say a public thank you and acknowledgement of your remarkable work and your many successes, and I wanted to invite Judy Newton up to the podium just to say a few words if you, if you'd be willing to.[364.00][364.00](APPLAUSE).
Daniel, you took my words, so I really don't have much to add. I mean, I could read our mission, that we live by every day, so that everybody would be on the same page and know what we do. And the Levy Senior Center Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization, operates to improve the quality of life for Evanston seniors by soliciting monies to supplement the Levy Senior Center's operating budget. In partnership with the city of Evanston, we seek to improve the center, its programs and resources. And as the board collectively and humbly, oh, good, Rob, you're here. Okay, thank goodness. Okay, we work together on a daily basis, and we do that with the help of Audrey and Mike Callahan, who we'd like to acknowledge and applaud every day.[429.13][429.13](APPLAUSE). And I mentioned to Daniel in my email that I think it's important at this stage of life for all of us to talk about positive things that go on within our city. And we're not asking for anything right now, except, well, I guess we are, to celebrate the goodness and the positive programming that goes on for the older adults in our community, which include over 25% of our population, between 55 and 100. And when you're over 90, we have Heaven Can Wait, so you get free membership. So, so think about that, okay? And we're always looking for more board members, and we're always looking for ways to grow and expand what we're doing. And every day is a new opportunity for growth for all of us, and we know as older adults, elders, that we've got to be in the joy. We've worked hard our whole lives, and it's time to celebrate, and it's time to live the truth that let's front-load it all and have a good time and keep on moving. And so, Rob, my younger friend, and true friend.[503.81][503.81](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Well said, Judy. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for everything that you do for this city. I just want to mention a couple of things, and that's number one, that we are the national qualifier for Illinois for the Senior Olympics. So we brought that to Evanston. We wrestled that away from Springfield, and it is now here. So every year, in the month of April, we have a big competition. We don't have a lot of our women here today, but we sent six teams from Evanston, women's teams and five men's teams, across ages from 50 all the way to 90, to the national senior games. So if you think, you know, we believe that life starts at 50. So, and I want to say thank you to Alderman Harakaris. Hope you said your name right. I've been trying for a while. I want to thank you because you showed up at our April 27th, and you just walked in and you said, "Rob, this is amazing." And I, you know, I know many Aldermen do a lot of things. I see Alderman Chrissy Harris out at a lot of stuff, and, and also Alderman Burns, but thank you for coming out and supporting us and seeing what could be. And I would like for a photo op. I would like for all you guys to come up front. I want to start with the, with the foundation board, if you can come up real quick. And if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, can we take a picture with you? And then we'll have the athletes come up. And we have athletes stretching from 50, again, all the way up to 90. Edwina was not able to be here, but we do have Neil Melbert, who's one of our oldest on the men's side. He's 85 years old, and he has a teddy bear with all of his medals on there. So this is the Levy Senior Center Board.[632.88][632.88](APPLAUSE). This is the Levy Senior Center Board, Hugo Rodriguez, Pam Harvey, Jane Wellner, I'm sorry, John Givens, Jerry Sizemore, the incomparable Judy, Bob Anthony, and Dorance, and myself.
Every Friday, every Friday, we have a farm stand, and that's in cooperation, partnership with Evanston Grows and the Garden Club of Evanston. We have tote bags that everybody gets, produce. We have a cookbook that we put out every year. If anybody would like to contribute to our cookbook, old family recipes, that would be great, you can find us at lscfevinston.org. So that's all. Thank you.
Can we get the athletes up for a quick photo op? And Sheila is here, if you don't know her. She has the basketball hat.
I might join in about seven hours, Rob. Thanks so much for being here. To all the folks from the Levy Center Foundation and the organization who joined, this concludes my announcements and proclamations for the evening. The next item on the agenda is the city, is this, oh, sorry, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, my hand was up. I just want to say, you know, you think about community centers throughout the city. You think about, you know, places, Councilmember Burns, like Fleetwood Jordan, which, you know, really feels like a, like it belongs to the neighborhood. And then you think about places like Robert Crown, Councilmember Nusma, and it, it belongs to the city. And I just want to say thank you to the board and how fortunate, while the Levy Senior Center is, happens to be in the 8th Ward, it's really one of the community centers that belongs to the entire city, and we're so fortunate to have it. We're fortunate to have a group of folks who have dedicated themselves to ensuring that the facility is the best that it possibly can be, and so I'm really thankful to the, to the board there. It's, it's really almost one less thing that I have to worry about, because I know they're such a great group of folks that are, that are stewarding that building, as well as Director Thompson, Thompson and the team. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Now that does conclude the, my announcements and proclamations for the evening. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. I have a number of key appointments I'd like to announce. First up, very excited to share that we've hired two deputy city managers. One of them is here tonight. The other person, Steve Ruger, starts in late August, and we will introduce him at a future meeting. But I'd like to introduce Karina Sanchez as our other deputy city manager, if you'd like to come up to the podium for a moment. Karina joins us with a variety of experience at the state, county, and municipal level, and if you'd like to share a few words.
Sure, I wasn't expecting to come up to the podium, but a good evening, Honorable Members of Council and fellow colleagues and as well residents of Evanston. As mentioned, my name is Karina Sanchez. I have over 20 years-plus experience being a public servant, having held various positions in various government entities from the state, county, most recently the city of Chicago. And I just want to say that I'm very honored to now be part of the city of Evanston team. I very much look forward to working with everyone and being able to be part of all of the great things that are happening in Evanston. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Karina. Next up, I'd like to formally announce the appointment of Alex Ruggie as our permanent corporation counsel. Alex has served the city of Evanston Law Department for over eight years and has served as interim corporation counsel since last August. I really appreciate her service. Alex, is there anything you would like to share?
Mayor Bis, members of city council, city manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, I just want to thank you all for this incredible opportunity. I am so honored to serve Evanston in this capacity, and I look forward to serving you for a long time. As Luke mentioned, I've been with the city for over eight years now. Prior to that, I actually clerked here at the city of Evanston for two years as a law clerk in law school. And I think my first week as a law student clerking here, I fell in love with the city of Evanston. I stand with Evanston's beliefs and foundations and goals, and I look forward to helping this council and the mayor implement their policies and goals, and assist all of our public city departments in legal compliance. So I look forward to continuing to work with you all, and Luke, thank you for this.
Thank you, Alex. And next up, I'd like to introduce Liza Roberson Young as our chief legislative policy advisor, if you'd like to share a few words. Liza comes to us with a variety of experience in private sector, nonprofit, as well as experience at the state of Illinois.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of council, city manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am truly thrilled to be here in Evanston. I can't wait to get to work supporting the amazing policy work that this council does. As city manager Stowe said, I come most recently from the nonprofit world at the ACLU of Illinois, but I'm excited to return to the public sector, which is where I worked previously, both as council for the Senate President's Office and as a policy advisor to the Attorney General. So I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Liza. And one final announcement, I'd like to ask Chris Seuss to come up. Chris is our new assistant city engineer, a really key position. We're thrilled to have you here. Chris comes to us from IDOT, as well as most recently from the city of Des Plaines.
Hello, thank you very much for the opportunity. I do have that experience from the Illinois Department of Transportation, and I came from another municipality, so I hope to bring all of that experience here, and hopefully we can work together with both our residents and the councils to bring good things to this city.
Thank you, Chris. And Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
The next item on the agenda, Councilmember Reed.
I'm sorry to be the annoying virtual person. Is it possible to ask a question, or, what I want to, is it possible to react to that?
I think it's happening right now.
All right. First, I want to say to everyone, congratulations on your new post. Really looking forward to getting to work alongside all of you and get to know the new folks. But I want to offer congratulations to Council Ruggie. You've been here just a bit longer than I have, and, you know, we've gotten to observe a number of corporation councils together, and I just want to say that one thing I'm really appreciative about your leadership style is we, I appreciate that you're, you're always willing to dig a little bit deeper and question yourself and question others, and I think that's really important. I think we've been missing that, and so I appreciate your approach, and I hope to see it continue. And then manager Stowe, just a quick question, I'm sorry, can you explain the new position a bit that Ms. Roberson is in, that, Roberson Young?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. As you can imagine, this, this council is very active on a whole variety of policy-making initiatives, and we want to be able to boost the capacity, the ability to do deeper research, and to complement the law department, complement Allison on her great work, and be able to expand our efforts on that front, and then also be prepared for whatever, you know, comes forward on the federal level in the coming months potentially.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have public comments submitted by Mary Beth Roth in support of the RLTO changes or amendments. Amanda Cinch is asking for there to be an exemption for homeowners with coach houses and the new renters and landlord tenant ordinance. Her concern is with coach houses that may not be included in, in the ordinance. She wasn't sure if it was, if coach houses are considered live, for, live owner-occupied units. And then Mike Myers, who also submitted a PowerPoint presentation to the council with ideas for the Dog Beach. That's it. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is our public hearing. So this is a public hearing relative to the application for $2 million in funding for the rehabilitation of a 30-bed homeless shelter under CDBGCV urban shelter program. This is being, so just traffic direction here, this is a public hearing being done consistent with state requirements for this type of program. The vote on the issue itself is in the, is later on in the agenda, I believe it's item A12, if I remember correctly, but first we'll hold this public hearing. The first thing I need to ask, is there anyone in need of translation services as we conduct this public hearing? All right, so we will move forward. We begin, I believe, with Director Flax, what's that?
Just in order, is there a motion needed?
I don't think so. I think what we're going to do at the end of this hearing, which I've opened, is we'll close it by a vote, which will require a motion when we're done, and then later in the meeting, there would be likely a motion on item A12, which is not before us at this time. But as I understand it, we are now opening a hearing, which will begin with discussion and then be closed by a vote. And so the hearing will begin then with a public comment, which will start with a report from Clerk Mendoza on the comments that have been shared in writing.
For public comments submitted, Maria Clark opposing, Sarah Pecat in favor, Fiona Murphy opposed, Laura Corona in favor, Dmitry Semisorv opposed, Gail Smith opposed, and Charles William in favor. And just another comment without indication of whether it's opposed or in favor of Harriet Selish.
So I believe the only person who signed up to give additional public comment, and again, this is not regular public comment, which comes later, but I think the only person who signed up, in addition to those who emailed Clerk Mendoza to give public comment in person here, is Ray Friedman. First of all, is that correct? Is anyone else seeking to give public comment on the public hearing? Ah, where did you sign up? Okay. All right, yeah, I think you signed up on the wrong sheet. So we'll begin with Ray Friedman, followed by Harriet Selak. And for this, for this public comment, every commenter will be given three minutes for their, actually, probably I'm not allowed to do that. I think, Director Flax, are you aware of the rules imposed by DCO? Okay, so every public commenter will be given infinity time in that case, and asked to use it well. So we'll go with Ray Friedman, followed by Harriet Selak, followed by Tina Payton.
Unlimited time. I like that. Should I start now?
You bet.
All right. So I just wanted to read this commenter, if he's here. Gen X common sense by birth date says, "This was in Evanston now over the weekend. It just makes a whole lot of sense to me. The ongoing saga of funneling millions into our beleaguered shelter system, a system that has reached a point of absurdity. The nonchalant tossing around of yet another $2 million figure is enough to make one question whether anyone in charge ever bothers to scrutinize these amounts. It's as if they've got a magic eight ball that consistently responds with $2 million whenever a financial decision looms. But here's the kicker: Despite what these organizations' leaders are trying to make you believe to justify another absurd money grab, almost all of those occupying these small encampments like Howard Street or using alleyways and doorways to leave their piles of trash, urine and feces aren't truly homeless at all. They treat these places like daytime get-high party stops or rest stops while panhandling and shoplifting, returning to their actual homes in Chicago once the sun sets. The whole Connections and Hilldis Place setup resembles an industrial complex akin to a prison system with shelters that offer about as much autonomy as a toddler's playpen, with cramped shared spaces that somehow, according to their math, cost the same or more than a high-end condo or apartment to rehab. Main, uh, wait, shared spaces that somehow, a high-end condo or apartment to rehab, maintain or to construct new. Connections and Hilldis Place, their incentive structure is all wrong. Solving homelessness would put them out of a job, so they perpetuate the cycle. They inflate costs, potentially line their pockets, and ironically solve precisely zero problems. The problem is not homelessness with these ongoing issues downtown. The problem is a total lack of accountability and enforcement of laws already on the books. The city council and activists are more concerned in making it more comfortable and welcoming for these individuals and groups to occupy alley space, doorways, all over downtown and on Howard Street with their garbage and nasty debris than making it welcoming for visitors and actual residents to walk around and safely shop." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Harriet Selak, who will be followed by Tina Payton.
Harriet Selak, 802 South Boulevard. The application for funds for the CDBGCV Urban Shelter Grant is very exciting and looks very promising. My statement is, I hope that the rules will make clear that no one will be allowed in the shelter who has advocated hateful or violent conduct toward anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payton.
Hi, good evening. Since this is a hearing, am I allowed to ask the questions, questions to the person?
This is a public comment period, but Director Flax wisely pointed out that this comes, should be, should come before the presentation from staff, and so you have the ability to ask questions, that staff might directly answer in their presentations, or that council members can follow up with staff about in the, in the portion that's going to come, that's going to follow.
Okay, so, so a question is for Director Flax. Where is this money coming from? It says July 29th is the deadline, and how is this money proposed or made public to who it's available for?
So you have the opportunity to make a full public comment, and all of those questions can then, whatever you raise can be incorporated in the discussion that goes on afterwards.
All right, so, so I just wanted to know who it was for, how anybody was, when these kind of grants and things come up, and what is the timeline for notification? So this was just kind of added to the agenda recently, so what is the notification period for it? Also, Connections last year, which you yourself, Mayor, and Councilmember Newsmo was at, that Hilda's Place received $2 million from Jan Chakowsky's office, and so I wanted to know what that money was used for last year, and how will this $2 million additional dollars benefit the people? From what I understand, Hilda's Place is a temporary shelter, so are you trying to make 30 permanent beds here, or is this continuing to shelter? So I don't know, I mean, you're saying that maybe this will be answered in the presentation. Are we allowed to ask questions then, or not?
This is the public comment portion, and so residents can make comment during this portion, and then after that, there will be a presentation, and again, everyone on the dais will have the ability to ask questions, and my understanding is there are actually other people from a variety of organizations here who are prepared to answer questions at that time.
Okay, so I can come up and ask questions at that time?
No, no, the, at that point, it'll be members of City Council who can ask questions of the folks giving the presentations.
When, right, but I don't know, it might be based on what they're saying, and they might not answer the question. From any other hearings, like when I go to the land use, there's a time to ask directly the person that's making the presentation. So that's what I thought this was. So you're saying that's not true? Director?
It is not.
Okay. All right, well, I hope you answer the question.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment portion of the public hearing. We now move on with the presentation from Director Flax.
Excuse me. Hello.
Oh, Ms. Esther?
Yes, I signed up for public comment for this hearing, and I did get a notice from the clerk's office that says, hey, your request to speak has been received. You have to be there in.
Yeah, no, no, you're, I'm sorry, it's, I understand, a few people, including the previous, yes. The next speaker is Ms. Betty Esther.
Thank you. I saw this hearing on the theme and what it was for. Five years ago, I did meet with Connection, the homeless, and we was talking about Hilda's Place and what kind of services and stuff that they had there. We met three times. It never was set, the homeless people that came through and ideas gave suggestion, and none of the suggestions was followed through, so they did not show up again. So it kind of explained having those meetings at Hilda's Place. You adding 12 beds. So in this, so are this 12 beds going to be in a different space, or is it going to be in the same space where the 18th, if 18 people are? Will it be so many for the men's sides and so many for the women's side? It didn't tell that in the application. The thing that bothers me with this, as much as we talk about homelessness, affordable housing, this was not brought to the community. And the people that was talking about this, especially Connection for the homeless, in 2019, when she started looking at this application, I got the finding from Representative Chakowski. At that same time, they was doing this ushering, if I believe I'm correcting all of the information that was passed out, about the dead end Wesley, the Wesley building. That was not in the comprehensive planning that they told the editor. You talked about it, you know, the building was falling, but there was nothing said. So let's save this building so these people won't be homeless. So what happened? You did find them place, but then I'm kind of, it's perturbed as to how those group of 24 families was treated. They said, go out, look for your place and everything. They did, so when the first came of July, and they thought that they would be moving in this nice apartment and stuff, but then they went to another apartment, and they are complaining about. So we are not serving the homelessness. We are really not dealing with them. And the numbers that is showed on page, I think it was 53 in the application, that talks about the population and give a breakdown as the population that would be benefiting from this Hilda's Place. You had a total of 78,100 people. That is kind of the population of Evanston State. That is not a true population that will be visiting the Hilda's Place. That is taking in people that own their own home and that are renting and are very stable in their renting project. Those numbers need to be redone because it's giving a false representation of what is going on at Hilda's Place and at Evanston. As Mr. Freeman read it, with the man talking about the article he wrote for the paper, if you are down the town and pay attention to what is going on, you do not see as many homeless people walking around and handling that was there in 2008, '29, and 2010. In 2010, the population started dwindling and seeing the number of homeless people here in Evanston. As you started having the apartments that you built that came in, that went online, that occupied, and then you had more people downtown that would complain and call the police, so the homelessness left that area. We don't have as many. We do have some, but not what that application is suggesting. You got until the 29th, it need to be redone, and I will suggest whollyheartedly that you do redo those numbers or withdraw the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that now does conclude the public comment portion of the public hearing. We now move on with Director Flax's comments.
Thank you, Mayor Biss, members of City Council, City Manager Stowe, and Clerk Mendoza. This is a formal and required part of an application for this funding for the Urban Shelter Program. This program was initiated by the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCEO is what we often refer to them as, and the goal is to fund construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or acquisition of properties for homeless shelters. Application is due on July 29th, as has been mentioned, and a resolution of support is required from the city to go with that application, or it is incomplete. I want to explain that everything in this is formatted by DCEO, down to the physical format of the resolution. They're very picky about these things, so if the resolution doesn't look like a normal Evanston resolution, that's because DCEO specified the physical style. And the things that I'm going to be walking through are also absolutely required to be brought up in the public hearing. One of those things is, where are our CDBG records? This funding, which is called CDBGCV, came out in the CARES Act, and they want to see the relationship, to want people to be able to see the, how we use our own CDBG funds and CDBG funds, CDBGCV funds as well, if they want to do that. So the website, www.cityofevanston.org/conplan, takes you to the page that all of those documents are on, if anyone wants to go look at them. Records on CDBG planning activities and performances are also there. And our CDBGCV funding was integrated into our action plans and our CAPR, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Reports. Funding available. 15 million has been made available for funding through this program. DCEO expects to make eight awards between half a million and $2 million. The source is the State of Illinois Community Development Block Grant CV funding, CDBGCV funds, and the specific purpose of those funds was to prepare for, respond to, and prevent coronavirus. This was the first funding that came out in the large portion of federal funding after COVID hit. Project location. 1458 Chicago Avenue is the location for Hilda's Place. Hilda's Place has been an overnight shelter for decades. Prior to COVID, COVID shut down all congregate shelters because they were unsafe during COVID. They were trying to prevent spread of the disease. But Hilda's Place operated as a day shelter and provided vital services for people who were on the street, homeless, and just needed all sorts of help, including food, all kinds of things, at Hilda's Place. The capacity of Hilda's Place can be up to 30 beds, that's per zoning, and that's always been Hilda's Place's capacity, even though they haven't always had that many beds. 100% of participants who will be served by this are eligible for CDBG funds by HUD's low mod income definition, and it does not displace any current resident in any way, shape, or form, because it is not occupied as housing. Project description. Hilda's Place Rehabilitation. We are submitting or proposing to submit a $2 million funding request to DCEO. No local funds are being requested for the project. The application requires the support of the City Council, but we are not being asked for matching funding or anything like that. Renovation of a homeless shelter currently used as a day shelter since COVID, to include up to 30 beds and continue to provide day services, healthcare, case management, et cetera. That's the function of Hilda's Place. Proposed renovation. New lobby and reception and staff office areas, new one-story entry vestibles, stair and concrete walkway at the north end, new three-stop elevator providing access to all floors. Accessibility is very important for this population, as for almost all populations. Selective demolition of existing interior partitions, ceilings, finishes, and lighting, new men's, women's, and two unisex toilet and shower rooms, new congregate sleeping rooms for occupancy of up to those 30 beds, renovation of existing kitchen on the first floor, and new mechanical ventilation and lighting. Those are the primary uses of funds. There is a more detailed description in the actual application. This shows the plan. It's kind of hard to see it on a screen this size, but it shows the areas that are actually, and their uses, and we can have IFF and Connections provide more detail on that and answer questions and point things out on the slide if that would be helpful. Proposed activities for funding. There is a full budget sheet posted in the application that lists all items by funding source. The CDBGCV funds, the specified uses are demolition, concrete, masonry, steel, carpentry, woodwork, waterproofing, insulation, roofing, fireproofing, doors, frames, windows, and hardware, curtain wall, glass and mirrors, drywall and plaster, flooring, painting, signage, kitchen and bath renovations, and elevators. Other funding, the $2 million from Representative Chakowski, will be used for HVAC, plumbing, electrical, telecom, security, site concrete, earthen work, retention piles, surveying, landscaping, construction, staffing, and various other construction costs. We have to explain our priority needs. Our priority needs are increasing new affordable housing opportunities and a variety of housing options, preparing naturally, preserving naturally occurring affordable housing, including equity in our zoning concepts, plans, and code, and increasing availability of housing assistance of various kinds. Evanston is a high-cost housing market, and the lack of affordable options affect many people and diverse demographics. Another goal, implement the city's Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which is to improve climate resilience through activity and policies that support carbon neutrality by 2050. Some of our oldest buildings are some of our biggest violators of climate action policy, so renovation of buildings like this can be very helpful toward that. So renovation of buildings like this can be very helpful toward that. Increase bikeability by investing in cycling infrastructure, et cetera, and preserve community character. The tree canopy and the lakefront are important assets. Foster economic growth with a focus on Evanston. Thrives Action Plan priorities. Help maintain retail vacancy, reduce retail vacancy, and downtown, and increase downtown vitality. Support local businesses and downtown vibrancy. Facilitate access to the downtown area and visibility of business districts. Support workforce development through continued program investment and public-private partnerships. Ensure equity in public health and expand community health partnerships. So support the reduction in poverty, especially with families with children. Reduce hospital admissions and emergency room visits that are not really the best place to take people who are suffering from certain conditions. Support the growing need for assistance to vulnerable Evanston community members, including unhoused refugees and migrant populations. Increase access to health resources for fifth-world residents. Encourage adult leisure time, physical activity. To address inequitable health outcomes and create a coordinated system of collaboration to provide services and meet the needs of residents with various social service needs and mental health issues. Enhance public safety. Crime, traffic, safety, and homelessness are issues. The community feels less safe than it has sometimes. Address low-level nonviolent issues through Alternative Response Program. That's the CARES program. Address public safety challenges through improved staffing levels. Sworn officers. Clarify community resources and guide and reduce violent crime against persons. Those are the requirements of what we have to present at this hearing. We can, at your choice, we can respond to questions now, or we can hold that and bring the team up when we are in the actual agenda. I've made a note of the various questions that were brought up.
So council members, I would say, we will hear this. This issue will come up again in the next, in the coming hours in the form of A-12. And since that's an inevitability, my recommendation would be that we hold questions for that time. Is there anyone who has a strong desire to ask questions now as opposed to that? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we'll look forward to further discussion on this matter as A-12 arrives. This now brings us to public. Oh, no, it doesn't. Because to Councilmember Reed's question, I would now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Councilmember Newsman moves to close the public hearing. Councilmember Hadda Kadi seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Wen. Not here, sorry. Councilmember Newsman.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sufferedin. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the public hearing is closed.
Point of order.
Yes?
Just a quick point of order. May I abdicate as a virtual member? My position is being called first. I'll abdicate to my seatmate, Councilmember Hadda Kadi, if possible.
I will let the clerk address that abdication as she sees fit. And.
I'm happy to do that, but for the next meeting, would you like me to call you next? Or just continue on with the roll call? Because that means that then you would be called twice consecutively in the next two meetings.
I would recommend that you just wield your awesome clerkly powers, as you prefer, and let them live with it.
That's okay with you. I'll just call you twice for the this meeting and next meeting.
This now brings us to public comment. There are quite a number of people signed up for public comment. And as a result, everyone will be given a minute and a half to speak. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person on this yellow sheet to speak in person, beginning with James Johnson, followed by John Keenixnicht, and then Mark Beersdorf. Is James Johnson present? I'm told he left. In that case, we'll move on with John Keenixnicht, followed by Mark Beersdorf, and then Mark Carlin. And I guess I will say, if John Keenixnicht, who is a person, is not here, this is. Oh, there you go. I was wondering about that. Okay, John Kennedy, excellent.
All right. Thank you all. John Kennedy, Third Ward. I'm speaking on the Dog Beach. The point is, there's a third route. City Engineers hired a company for $130,000. They came up with two routes, of which one was less expensive, which is the one being considered tonight. The third route is a natural one. Six feet right next to the existing ramp. Basically drops three and a half feet of elevation. Has no impact on the dune. It's a shorter distance to get to the objective, which is to getting paid, you know, handicapped people down to the beach. And it's more flexible. You could put up an aluminum, commercial-grade aluminum ADA ramp today and see how it works, and put in a wood or a concrete ramp right over it next year. It's less expensive than the proposed plan. So I urge the council to put this on hold and ask staff to explore this third route. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Beersdorf, who'll be followed by Mark Carlin, and then Jeff Borini.
Thank you all for your time. I want to speak about the Dog Beach. I live in the First Ward, three blocks from the Dog Beach. And my dog Romeo and I go down there all the time. As an IT and security professional, works on multimillion-dollar projects. I often hear real problems and real needs, but solved with solutions that don't quite match what those needs and problems are. And this seems to be right down that line. A path that is as long as it is is going to be hard for people with disabilities to go down. Six feet is not enough distance for two handicapped people with dogs to pass one another, going through the front entrance with a beach, which already blocks up sometimes with lines with as many as 30 different dogs coming and going out of the Dog Beach at the same time. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So my ask is that let's do a proof of concept. It's simple. It's not spending $800,000. Let's put a minor ramp in. It comes in through the dog entrance. Let's see how that goes. Let's see how many people show up and use it. Let's see how it works before we start spending all this money. And I don't really care about the money. What I care about is that we're tearing up the environment for the Affordable Care or the ADA. And these two should not be competing with one another, right? We shouldn't have to destroy the environment to follow the ADA. So let's put in a temporary solution, a POC, and go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Carlin, who'll be followed by Jeff Borini, and then John Ritter.
Mark Carlin, the Ninth Ward. I want to thank, first of all, the Housing and Community Development Committee for working on Ordinance 52024, amending the city's residential landlord-tenant ordinance, which is up for introduction tonight. And I want to thank the City Council for its patience as we work through this very thorny issue. Clearly, it's been an extremely contentious issue. And I think finding a middle ground has been everyone's goal. It's my understanding that Ordinance 52024 is now in a state that protects tenants while taking in the concerns that some of the landlords have expressed. I think that this has been on the table for so long that it's a time now to vote on it, to move it forward, and to ensure that the tenants of Evanston have just recourse in many areas that were not specified in the old RLTO. So I encourage you quite strongly to vote for introduction of this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Borini, who'll be followed by John Ritter, and then Aaron Bornstein.
Thank you. Jeff Borini, Second Ward. And I'd like to encourage you all to follow the unanimous recommendation of the Preservation Commission and send the proposed ADA dog ramp, or ramp down to the Dog Beach back to the design phase for creation of a third option. I lived in Evanston for over 30 years. My son Ted uses a power wheelchair, so we have a lot of, you know, experience with accessibility, particularly here in Evanston. And my background also includes a lot of project management, particularly of projects that involve creative design. And my suspicion is that we're hearing a lot of objections and suggestions for alternate things here because the right people were not gathered at the top of this project and brought in, and the right constituents gathered, the right information gathered. So I think the city should gather the Smith Group again, whoever gave the original input, but also add representatives from the Dog Beach, more representatives from the disability community here in Evanston, and go back to the design phase and come up with a third option that is shorter, is more direct, and also reflects the pride and, you know, the history of the beach itself, and reflects the commitment that we have to our residents with this disabilities, their dignity, and is something that we're going to be proud of, and it's going to last for a long, long time. So please send this back for more design work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Ritter, who'll be followed by Aaron Bornstein, and then Kingsley.
Hello, I'm John Ritter from the Fifth Ward. I use the Dog Beach almost every day. I love the Dog Beach. It's an absolute jewel. I think the space north of the existing concrete ramp, between that and the seawall, is adequate for access. I don't see any reason it wouldn't be. And the idea of spending $800,000, just, I find it ridiculous. I've worked in factories for years in environments similar to a beach with grit all over. And things can be built for a lot less than that that can be very durable. This could be powered. This could, this could just be a ramp. It's a high school project. And we have top-level universities around here that should be used as a resource for making a decision and coming up with this design that is practical. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Aaron Bornstein, who'll be followed by Kingsley, and then Susan Taylor.
Hi, my name's Aaron Bornstein. I'm a small landlord here in Evanston. I'm speaking about the revisions to the RLTO, the proposed revisions. First, I want to thank the council for listening to the housing providers' input. The improvements that have been made in the draft language that was in the package just released, they go a long way to addressing our concerns on the landlord penalties, the late fees, and the notice provisions. I still don't understand why we're making these changes to the RLTO. I think Evanston has something like 45,000 tenants. They have less than 100 evictions a year. And so to me, you don't change a system that's not broken, and this is not a thing to do. That being said, what's currently in there with the revisions, these aren't the biggest changes in the world. And I don't know that you're going to put anybody out of business. What would put people out of business is just cause. And I know just cause is not up for a hearing today. I greatly appreciate that. But I know there are certain members of this council who definitely are trying to move just cause forward. Research has shows rental units subject to a just cause scheme lose 30%, 40% of their value. No city in Illinois or anywhere in the Midwest has enacted such a scheme. Those mostly coastal cities and states that have tried just cause, they have a range of problems. Very expensive housing, huge homeless populations. You have, you have people doing drugs, defecating in the middle of the street. These are bad policies. Evanston should not model themselves on such a thing. And when just cause comes up, I hope you make clear that this is a nonstarter here, and we don't want such problems in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kingsley, who will be followed by Susan Taylor, and then Kurt Mittenbuler.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm happy to be here this evening. Just to give you a little introduction about myself, I do have a presence, a social media presence, where I have a modest amount of followers. And what I do is I follow up on news reports that involves government activities and especially government wrongdoing. And I do follow up on those issues. And because as we know, we hear about these stories on the news media, and they don't really follow up. So what I do is I follow up on those issues and make sure, or do what I can to find out what were the underlying issues that precipitated those events, that those wrongdoings. So having said that, I want to make it clear that I am not anti-police. I am not anti-government. As we all know, any civilized society needs law enforcement. Any civilized society requires law and order to function properly. So I am not anti-police. But the reason I'm here today, because I don't have a lot of time. The reason I chose to move to Evanston is because Evanston is one of the more progressive municipalities in the Chicagoland area, and I'm proud of that. But recently, I was reading an article that about, well, we all know about the incident with Lawrence Crosby in 2015, the Northwestern PhD student that was literally assaulted by police officers. So to cut the long story short, I read an article that said that not much has been done to make sure that that doesn't happen, that will not happen again. So my, the reason I'm here is to tell you guys to please do what you can as far as training, as far as policy, as far as policy changes, to make sure that that doesn't repeat itself again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Susan Taylor, who will be followed by Kurt Mittenbuler, and then Hugo Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Biss and City Council members. I'm Susan Taylor. I live at the Avador, a 55-plus senior living community. In November of 2023, a group of tenants wrote to Mayor Biss and our council member Chrissy Harris. We presented letters, assigned petitions from dozens of tenants about the abuse, bullying, and retaliation we've experienced from the management staff after Gray Star took over managing the building in 2022. After the meeting with the mayor and our council member, we made a formal complaint to the Illinois Department on Aging. The complaint was investigated by Adult Protective Services of the Illinois Department on Aging. It was substantiated for emotional abuse. The State of Illinois has named Avador manager Chris Baker an elder abuser. Elderly tenants are not the only ones who live with this threat. All Evanston tenants are at risk of losing their homes if they ask for repairs that the landlord doesn't want to make. Instead of making the repairs, a landlord can simply refuse to renew a lease for no cause, then rent the apartment to an unsuspecting new tenant and let the apartment deteriorate. The only solution to this problem is just cause, which will require landlords to provide a valid reason for not renewing a lease. We have the opportunity to stop these abuses in Evanston. I urge you to include just cause in the RLTO being considered today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kurt Mittenbuler, who will be followed by Hugo Rodriguez, and then Anthony Sheridan.
Thank you. I was in the housing industry for 50 years as a builder, tradesman, inspector, and housing provider. I'm retired, and I'm still a housing provider. I'm retired, and I study housing policy here and in China for fun. Remember in January 2020, before COVID got here, when the news announced an Evanston man was stranded in Wuhan? That was me. We should have China's problems, 80 million empty, unoccupied housing units. We have the benefit of studying other communities throughout America and in China that are advancing and providing affordable housing. And these communities are not employing punitive policies like just cause. The communities adding housing at rates that meet demand are using policies that are the opposite of several policies being promoted in Evanston. Housing policy is complicated stuff, way more complicated than can be presented in a couple of minutes at a council meeting. I own a small apartment building on South Boulevard where I also reside. I use the standard Evanston RLTO agreement. It's fair, balanced, all the additional items currently being discussed regarding penalties, fees, notifications, or whatever. I don't care. Put it all in there. It's not going to really affect anything, but it's not going to do anything either. Just cause, on the other hand, takes away my ability to manage my property. It's a punitive measure against housing providers. It's a punitive measure against housing providers by individuals with no actual experience in providing housing. Creating policy from a few individual complaints and well-intentioned folks not experienced in providing housing is a really bad way to developing policy. Just cause is a single childish reaction to an extremely complicated set of questions. I ask the council to put a hold on just cause because it is poorly conceived and misguided method for achieving equitable housing policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Hugo Rodriguez, who will be followed by Anthony Sheridan, and then Dan Skirmerhorn. All right. The next speaker in that case is Anthony Sheridan, who will be followed by Dan Skirmerhorn, and then Jory Kowarski.
Anthony Sheridan here, Eighth Ward, born and raised Evanstonian. On May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, my wife and two-year-old daughter, Isla, were victims of an electrical worker employed by Elmond and Nelson, whom Evanston contracted to perform traffic light sculptural work at Dawes. This man made an sexual comment towards my daughter, on which I left work early to take photos and document. And I also filed a 301 complaint per issue. I received a call from the city, and they said they were going to follow up and have the, their project manager contact me. All I wanted was an apology and for this employee to be reprimanded. It is now a month and a half later. I have not heard one word. I am not a litigious person at all, but I am an advocate for my daughter, and I want this resolved. What would you do if this was your kid? What would you do if you came home with your wife crying over what had happened, and nothing has been done? The police were wonderful. They told me to bank on you guys to help me with this situation, and I've had nothing but disappointment. Please, I'm going to follow up. Please take care of this. It's a two-year-old girl this happened to. Why am I being pushed aside? Why is she being pushed aside? I hope this happens to no one ever again. I love this community. I advocate for trades, union trades to be coming here and provide careers. I go out my way to do this. Why am I receiving this from this city that I love? And why is this going off on my, my two-year-old daughter? I have not had any support from you. I pay property taxes.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Skirmerhorn, who will be followed-
Excuse me, I just, I can't, you know, can't hear that, and then just go to the next. I was going to ask if you could do that, manager Stone, he's already making his way. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Skirmerhorn, who will be followed by Jory Kowarski, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Dan Skirmerhorn, and I'm here to talk about the proposed changes to the RLTO. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for their willingness to listen to our input, and some of the changes that have been made have certainly moved in the right direction as far as we're concerned. There are two areas, though, that I would like to continue to bring up, and I hopefully can be resolved with a couple of housekeeping changes. One is the notice provision for month-to-month leases is lumped in with longer-term leases, and so the notice provision for a month-to-month lease on the side of the landlord is ninety days, which makes it no longer a month-to-month lease. So our thought would be to maybe pull that out as a separate subsection of five-three-six-five and allow for month-to-month leases to have a notice period of thirty days in keeping with the term month-to-month leases. The other is with regard to notice and response dates for lease renewals, which I think we'd mentioned at the last council meeting. There's a significant population of student renters who do their leasing long before the forty-five days or ninety days before the lease expires, and so I would suggest that we change that provision to allow for a forty-five-day period where the tenant has the ability to review the offer presented, and that the landlord must present that offer at least ninety days before the lease expires. But that way, the lease renewal can be offered much earlier for those that need it, and not pigeonhole those tenants into a position where they have to do their leasing within forty-five days of their lease expiration at a time when they're not even in Evanston. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jory Kowarski, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Tina Patton.
My name is Jory Kowarski. I'm an Evanston resident in the Fourth Ward. Thank you to Mayor Bis and the rest of City Council for hearing me speak this evening. As the Prevention Manager at Connections for the Homeless, my job is to literally keep people from losing their homes. I'm in support of the amendments to the RLTO, and I wanted to share two stories if I have time that show how uncapped housing fees can be such a huge problem for tenants in need. One tenant with a housing choice voucher and a limited fixed income needed to move into a new apartment. The local landlord decided to charge a nonrefundable move-in fee that was the same amount as one month of market rate rent on the unit, a fee over two thousand dollars when the subsidized rent was around two hundred dollars a month. I asked the landlord whether or not he could do this, and he said there's nothing in the current RLTO that caps move-in fees. While Connections was able to cover this cost, the fact that the landlords can charge unlimited move-in fees is a significant concern, especially for lower-income tenants that simply do not have the means to pay costs that are not explicitly related to their move. I had another story, but I don't think I'm going to have time, but another voucher holder who basically they're, they had health issues, and they got behind on the rent, the landlord charged late fees that were pretty much, it was like half their rent portion. So as that kept accruing, you know, it kept, you know, being the cause of their housing instability. Overall, landlords are willing to work with us and collaborate with us, but, you know, the fact that they're charging exorbitant fees, you know, can cause issues for tenants, so we want to amend the RLTO and make sure that tenants and landlords can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Tina Patton, and then Milton Zimmerman.
Can I get unlimited time? Good evening. Hope everyone had a great Fourth of July celebration. I'd like to talk about two ward meetings held last week, but I did not attend my own second ward meeting until the very end because I needed to attend the other ward meeting held on the same day, same time, and same place. I did ask our council member Chrissy Harris why we keep having multiple city meetings at almost the same time and on the same day, and I'm happy to say that Chrissy is planning to change that in the future. So thank you, Chrissy. So my request is to all council members, city manager, Mayor Bis, please have all city meetings on different days, or at least at different times, a few hours apart, so that all Evanston residents are able to attend. Thank you very much. And lastly, once again, I'd like to talk about my favorite topic: money. After raising our budget for the last three years by about fifty million, sorry to be repetitious, but we're not getting a response, and same thing is going on with, we received forty-three million in ARPA funds, raising budget fifty million a year. I can't understand why we're so heavily indebted in our general obligation bonds, which we currently owe about two hundred million. Don't know if that includes the thirty-four and a half million that was just approved. You know that it costs taxpayers about fifteen million per year, or about one point two million per month, and it doesn't look like those GO bonds will ever get paid off. Can you please tell, tell us why the city would burden its taxpayers with this unnecessary recurrent expense?
Thank you very much.
Same question, one more sentence, please.
Thank you very much.
Same question for spending two-point-five million on leasing.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Patton, who will be followed by Milton Zimmerman, and then Priscilla Thomas.
My name is Tina Payden.
Did someone else sign you in somehow? Is that what?
Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. I'm not going to, I'm not going to box you on it. We have more important issues to talk about.
I'm just reading what it says up here.
It's okay. Anyway, I'm here about the RLTO. I believe that that needs to be sent back to the special subcommittee that Council Member Kelly had for these type of issues. I'm hoping that she will start her committee again because we don't get any opportunity to speak. We had one meeting with Council Member Revel's Committee, the Housing and Community Development Committee, with the landlords, and then here we are, standing here, getting one minute to say yea or nay to these changes. If you would look at the meeting on April sixteenth, when this was passed through, you would know that there was a big fight, and two of the members left the committee. There was an argument, the, the members of the committee didn't even know the rules, the current rules. This is not appropriate. So I hope that we would have more conversation with the landlord. These changes are not going to help the people that you're trying to protect. The result will be higher rent, more scrutiny on applications, so people with evictions, bankruptcy, and not a good credit history will not be accepted. Remember, if your Aunt Bertha or your Uncle Charlie is sitting on your couch clipping their toenails and farting, and they're going to be in your place more than thirty days, you're going to have to abide by this RLTO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Milton Zimmerman, who will be followed by Priscilla Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Milton Zimmerman, and I'm a resident of the First Ward, and I'm here to talk about Dog Beach. So Norman, our dog, and I, along with our family, are regulars at Dog Beach, and we love it, and so thank you for that great resource. I'm the former chairman of the Board of Jewish Child and Family Services, president of the Jewish Vocational Service, and I'm the vice president of a company with four hundred and fifty employees. So I understand when you put together a plan and you bring in a third-party consultant, burn a lot of calories, and also put a lot of your resources into a plan, what it means to try to push that plan forward. But I also understand what it means to stop, kind of put the brakes on, and really evaluate what the plan is so that you make the right decision. I believe that this proposal is like a Mercedes or a Ferrari when all we really need is a Ford F-150. So what I advocate is access without excess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Priscilla Thomas.
My name is Priscilla Thomas. I'm eighty-nine years old. I'll be ninety in two months, and I have an elderly dog. And we go to the Dog Beach every single morning, often in the afternoon. I love it. It's my favorite place in all of Evanston. I can get down to what's there now, the ramp there. I can do that, but the time comes that I'm going to need an ADA ramp, too. I do think, and I don't mean to be repetitive, but this eight-hundred-thousand-dollar thing, it's too long for people like myself. It's going to get very crowded with myself here and a dog over here. We take up the whole thing. You're going to have people coming the other way who are just as big as I am with the dog, and it's just not going to work, and they're going to, it's going to be, you're going to have children running up and down it who are entering the beach, you're going to have dogs snarling at each other. I just think it's a very bad idea, and I hope we can go with a smaller one entering the Dog Beach the way it is now. I think it would be much better for elderly people like myself who are infirm. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Megan McClung, followed by Emma Soglan, and then Mary Disluver.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Megan McClung. I'm an attorney, and I work here in Evanston at the Moran Center for Youth Advocacy. I'm the managing attorney of the School-Based Civil Legal Clinic, and today I'm here to lend some information on why you should support amending Evanston's RLTO. During COVID, during the pandemic, Cook County passed their ordinance, their residential tenant landlord ordinance that starts with tenant first, and Chicago also updated their RLTO to amend their standards to fit with what Cook County passed. Evanston has always been highly regarded for having basic standards for landlord conduct and tenant protections for over thirty years, and now it's essential that Evanston expand their key provisions so that tenants in Evanston have the same rights as tenants across Cook County. I can tell you that as an advocate who goes to housing court often, it is embarrassing to see that other tenants have the right to pay to stay, but we do not if our tenants reside in Evanston. That is just one of the provisions. I would strongly give a, just some information on why it's needed, and also to consider defining what pay means. We had an issue where there was a landlord who was not required to accept payment, emergency payment, from the city of Evanston. And so make sure that it also includes that pay is pay and accept. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Emma Soglan, who will be followed by Mary Disluver, and then Kevin Grigsby.
Good evening. My name is Emma Soglan. I was born and raised here in Evanston, and I now work as a law clerk at the Moran Center's School-Based Civil Legal Clinic. I strongly believe that Evanston needs a more robust RLTO, and I support the proposed amendments. Over half of the cases that I work on every day at the Moran Center are housing-related, and previously I worked in the city of Chicago doing eviction defense under the city of Chicago's RLTO. I've seen how the Evanston RLTO currently fails to provide tenants with the protection that other tenants are afforded in Cook County, and this legislative change to align with Cook County's 2021 RTLO can empower Evanston renters and increase access to safe, dignified, and affordable housing here in Evanston. One proposed amendment that would make a great difference for Evanston renters is increasing the notice period for nonrenewal of a lease from thirty to ninety days. As many of you are aware, the housing market in Evanston is absolutely overwhelmed. Thirty days is not nearly enough time for a renter to find a safe and affordable housing option when their landlord chooses not to renew their lease. As just one example, the Moran Center currently assists an Evanston grandparent who has been diligently searching for a new housing option for weeks without any luck. They have struggled to find an apartment due to rising rental prices in Evanston, but do not want to uproot their grandchildren from their homes and communities and schools. If the RLTO amendment increased the notice period to ninety days, they would have more time to find a safe and dignified option for their family. Without this reform, we're looking at increasing the exodus of low-income and minority families from Evanston due to this outdated and insufficient protection of the current ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Disluver, who will be followed by Kevin Grigsby.
Good evening. I'd like to make just a few comments on just cause. I'm very concerned that not enough study has been done of the issue and why exactly it's being considered being implemented. I would like to point this group's attention to the fact that in New York, the Furman Center from New York University did a study of this. What an idea to study the problem before they enact something, but that's what they decided to do, and they caution that it has a great deal of problems associated with it, a lack of investment, exclusion of the most vulnerable renters from the market, lengthening the time to resolve landlord-tenant issues, and increasing the time and cost of eviction proceedings, which should be of great note here because Evanston has an extraordinarily low rate of evictions. What they do encourage is that before enacting such a widespread and substantive law, that the local community look at other alternatives, such as having intervention procedures, having mentorships, having mediation proposals. It will not affect, that would not affect the market in general. It would not increase the rents, which just cause absolutely will do, in my opinion. As a small landlord, I know that I myself am considering leaving because of just cause, and I know two or three others that are thinking of it, so I ask you please to take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Grigsby.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Grigsby. I'm a staff attorney with the Moran Center for Youth Advocacy, and I'm here to support the amendments to Evanston's residential landlord-tenant ordinance. As my colleagues have mentioned, many of the proposed amendments to Evanston's ordinance would simply bring ordinance in line with what was enacted by Cook County back in 2021. And as my colleague- And as my colleague Emma mentioned, increasing the notice period for nonrenewal of a lease from 30 days to 90 days would give Evanston renters an adequate opportunity to find housing here in Evanston and remain in the Evanston community. And further, amending Evanston's residential landlord-tenant ordinance to prohibit the shifting of attorney's fees in eviction court from the landlord to the tenant would simply slightly level an already unfair playing field. More than 80% of the tenants that we see in eviction court are unrepresented and do not have attorneys. And so asking them to pay for their landlord's attorney's fees when they often don't even have representation themselves is really just unjust. And we have seen in the local courts attorney's fees awarded up to anywhere between $600 and $2,000. And adding that burden on to a tenant who really, who many times cannot afford the price of rent is really just unjust and unfair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Ezra Shevick, who will be followed by Carl Klein, and then Amanda Ziem. It looks like Mr. Shevick is no longer in the Zoom, so we'll continue then with Carl Klein, who will be followed by Amanda Ziem.
Good evening. As the Secretary of the City of Evanston Historic Preservation Commission, I sent you all an email with the letter that the City of Evanston Historic Preservation Commission sent on July 3rd. I'm going to read the comments and recommendations from that letter. Commissioners wondered if the right questions were asked of the designers to properly identify the problem and study corresponding solutions that incorporate the priorities of all stakeholders. The scope of work does not adequately minimize impact to the site's character and avoidance of adverse impacts to the historic and environmental setting could be achieved by restricting construction to the area south of the breakwater on the existing Dog Beach without impact to the existing natural area. Consider exploring a scaled-down or temporary design due to the extensive public testimony of what works and does not work for dogs, accessibility, budget, and habitat. Seek a more efficient use of money to solve the accessibility problem without added scope in the natural area. Priorities should include a double gate entry, security card access, dog wash, multiple benches along the stretch of the beach if the rocks will remain blocked by fencing, lighting at the gate, and of course, smooth, safe wheelchair access along as much of the Dog Beach as possible. Moving forward, the city needs to act diligently to follow the mandated process for the commission review of city-initiated projects that will affect historic resources. Please refer to the full letter that I sent you earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker is Amanda Ziem.
Hi, my name is Amanda Ziem. I am a member of the Preservation Commission. I'm also a resident of the Second Ward and a landlord of a two-bedroom, one-bath coach house in the Ridge Historic District. I'm here to talk about just cause and also the proposed Dog Beach access. Regarding just cause, I was wondering what the consideration was for small landlords like me with one unit, which are not technically owner-occupied. I understand that small owner-occupied landlords with six or fewer units are exempted. And I would just like you to consider exempting small landlords with one, with single coach houses. In the past, we have rented our coach house in our backyard to long-term renters. More recently, my family lived in our coach house as we undertook a renovation on our house. I'm concerned that landlords like us will have difficulty removing tenants, which are actually literally in our own backyard, if we're held to the same standard as large corporate landlords with lots of resources. I also, I also just want to note that this may have an unintended consequence if landlords like me are not exempted. We may exit the long-term market in favor of short-term rentals. And regarding preservation, I would say the Preservation Committee unanimously recommended not moving forward with the Dog Beach proposal. And I hope that you all have a chance to review the full notes that Carl referenced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. This brings us now to Special Orders of Business. Is there a motion relative to Item SP1?
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, I will second Item SP1, which is Ordinance 60024, the Leiflow Ordinance, amending Title 8, Chapter 26.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Ordinance 60-0-24. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, would the clerk please, sorry, hold on. We're having a light issue up here. Could someone else flip their light on to make sure that? Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
There's a switch in the front that controls the lights. Like a light switch.
All right. So we're going to do two things. We're going to allow the people who think about stuff like this to think about stuff like this. And we're going to continue, we're going to continue with the discussion. So just Councilmember Reed, do what you're going to do anyways. Use your Zoom raise hand function. Everyone else up here, if you just raise your physical hands if you want to be called on, I'll do my best to see your physical hands. So we'll begin with Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope we are just about at the end of this. And just to review where we were last time, we left staff with the task of defining athletic field. And the definition of athletic field is not included in the draft ordinance in front of us because we did not have that definition to vote on last time. So the motion I'm about to make, which I emailed just a minute ago, is to amend Section 826.3 definitions to add the definition of athletic field as recommended by staff. In the email, I copied and pasted the staff's definition. So that is the motion.
Councilmember Newsma moves to amend Ordinance 60-0-24 by including a definition of athletic field as just emailed to all of council. Councilmember Revelle seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role on the amendment to add the definition of athletic field?
Councilmember Hidakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Point of order. Point of order. I think the motion needs to be read out loud. You can't just email the motion because how will the public know what's happening? So I think just Councilman Newsma, to be in order, should read the motion.
Happy to do so.
I guess without personally weighing in as to whether or not that's a procedure, a correct statement of procedure, I think it's a good best practice. So why don't you go ahead, Councilmember, and do that?
So the definition as proposed by staff, which is contained in my motion, is as follows. An athletic field is a playing field or sports ground with an open space used for organized sporting events and physical activities, including but not limited to football, soccer, baseball, rugby, lacrosse, tennis, athletics, or similar sports. The field is typically covered with natural grass or artificial turf and often contains specific markings and equipment, such as fencing, goalposts, and netting that are necessary for the particular sport being played. Athletic fields in this definition include those associated with schools, universities, city recreational fields, and athletic clubs, but do not include private residences.
So again, that was the proposed definition in the amendment that was made by Councilmember Newsma and seconded by Councilmember Revelle to include a definition of athletic field in the Ordinance 60-0-24. We were in the middle of a roll call, and so I believe we'd already taken two votes, Councilmember Hidakaris and Kelly's.
I just did not hear it. Councilmember Kelly's?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 60-0-24 is so amended. Councilmember Newsma, you still have the floor if you so desire.
No further comment. I'm ready to vote on this one.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Just very quickly.
Councilmember Reed.
I will say that I'm, while I voted for it, I think we need a definition of athletic field. I raised it the last time. I'm still somewhat uncomfortable. I just want to highlight my uncomfortability and not necessarily get into it. But I don't know if we need to exclude, for example, Northwestern from, you know, why should Northwestern not have to use electric blowers? I'm, I would venture to say that they likely do already, I would hope. But I just don't see a need to exclude them. And as the definition reads now, they are excluded. Is this, I'm sorry, this is for action tonight, correct? I will, I will leave it as is. But if someone wants to address that, maybe I'll support you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on the amended ordinance?
Councilmember Hidakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
I also have these concerns, but we can't, can that not be addressed now?
I mean, they could have until a motion was made. I mean, sorry, until the, right, until the roll call was called. But now, but now we're in the middle of a roll call. There's literally no, like, we're in the middle of a roll call.
Okay, I'm going to say no, given certain exemptions that I have questions about, so.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
With five voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 60-0-24 is passed. Now, on Item SP2, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I guess a little bit of clarity is required here, Councilmember Reed. What are you moving? You're moving to accept the staff recommendation?
Thank you for that. For now, yes, to open us up.
Councilmember Reed moves to adopt the staff recommendation relative to Project 892. Councilmember Newsma seconds.
I'd like somebody else to second that.
Sorry.
Oh, well, then I withdraw my motion.
I will move Item SP2 for discussion.
Councilmember Newsma moves that we discuss Item SP2. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Newsma moves that we discuss Item SP2. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Oh, I forgot to announce the very exciting news. The lights are fixed. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. As mentioned before, I have concerns that there is a need for this guaranteed income outside of one area. And if we're going to make adjustments, I would like it to be open. As I mentioned before, the Eighth Ward is in need. I don't know what that looks like. I'm okay with the lottery type. But Evanston needs help. We need help, not just one concerted place. So that's my thought.
Councilmember Newsma.
I'll second what Councilmember Harris just said. If the choice is either to increase the age requirement in that one particular census tract or to keep the age requirement as is and expand eligibility to the entire city of Evanston, I would prefer the latter. I understand that means that we would have to do a lottery system rather than having anybody who applies be automatically eligible. But how do, how do we spend this money most equitably is the question. And I think making eligible, making, making it available to citizens throughout Evanston, residents throughout Evanston, is the most equitable way to do it.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, Councilmember.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Thank you. I, you know, I agreed with Councilmember Harris and others when we first addressed this. I would think that sticking, you know, close to where we started off with this, which would be focusing on the two zones that, the two census tracts that have the highest rates of poverty, I think, is a good place to stick. And I would recommend, or in fact, I'll move that the expansion of the program be limited to the census tract in the Fifth Ward and the Eighth Ward that demonstrate the highest need in the city of Evanston.
Just as a point of information, I believe Councilmember Reed means Census tract 892, correct?
So 892 is the one that was already approved.
Yes, 892, Fifth Ward.
And so 8102, is that correct?
I believe that is, yes, the census tract in the Eighth Ward on the east side.
So Councilmember Reed has made a motion, which is to expand the existing guaranteed income program by adding a census tract of eligibility, namely tract 8102. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Harris seconds.
If I may.
Yep, the floor is yours, Councilmember Reed. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Just to speak directly to this motion, you know, we discussed this, or at least certainly, it was raised by some folks early on that this might be a possibility of expanding this next year. I think if we're getting here this year, that makes sense. We want to keep it to following, you know, some best practices and guidelines. Keep it to the areas that have demonstrated the most need. It's clearly the census tract in the Fifth Ward. And the, and I'll say that this census tract also touches the Ninth Ward as well. But I would imagine that when you look at the rates of childhood poverty and other poverty indicators, it certainly is primarily that the need is concentrated in the Eighth Ward. This will allow us to get the most bang for our buck and really, you know, hone in on communities that have the most need. And I think originally, our goal was to, I forget if there was a study component. I don't believe this time there was. But I think there's some internal metrics that we could keep track of that could, you know, really, when we keep it confined in this manner, give us some really key insights on how to roll this out in the future, potentially citywide. Thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor. At this time, there are four people who've signed up to speak. And I'll just, there's, this time, there are five people who've signed up to speak. I'll just call on you all, if you're not seeking to speak, on the motion that Councilmember Reed just made, then just pass. We'll come back to you after that's been addressed. But we begin with Councilmembers Sufferton, Kelly, and Revelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from a funding perspective, there's $900,000, and it's a question of how it gets distributed. But in talking about doing this in the future, what is the proposed funding source for that? That's what I thought.
Good evening, Allison Leipzig, our Policy Manager. The proposed funding is fundraising from Northwestern that they've committed to through the Community Benefits Agreement, specifically for guaranteed income.
Okay, and it'll be $900,000. I mean, whatever.
But we're not sure what the amount would be. They didn't commit to a specific amount.
Oh, that would have been nice, wouldn't it? All right, so we're talking about the same amount of money. It's just a question of expanding how. But you're, and by expanding, you're increasing the likelihood. But you're, and by expanding, you're increasing the likelihood of people who qualify not receiving benefits, correct?
No, sorry, ask again.
What I'm saying is, there's $900,000. That's the money. It's ARPA money. But if you're talking about expanding eligibility, you're going to have more qualified recipients than you do money.
It depends on how we expand it. If we expand it by age, which is the staff proposal, we know by working with District 65 through their free and reduced lunch program, which is the same income requirement that we already had for the program. And we know that it'll be basically the amount that we can cover.
Okay.
So like, if we, if we add second, first and second grade, we'll hit our mark within census tract 892. If we open it up to a new census tract, or our other proposal was citywide as opposed to a specific census tract, then we are, we will have to implement either a first come, first served or a lottery system.
Okay, so that's really the question. Are we going to expand it beyond its ability to expedite something? I think generally telling people they're eligible for something that isn't funded is dirty.
Well, sure. I mean, when we, when we did applications for individuals in 892, we said, you, if you qualify, you will get it. So those people are in the program. We would not submit. There's, they've been told they're going to, they're eligible. They will be receiving the funding. We only have like 60-ish people, families, households, who qualify in that census tract, which is why we're coming back, because we have more money, or we have fewer households than we anticipated based on our census estimates.
Okay.
And we thought we had like pretty much exactly 150, but we only have 60 people, 60 households that are signed up. So now we're saying, should we expand the age and do more people in that census tract? Or should we open it up? It'll be sort of like a new tranche of people. And those people would be lottery. And we would, we would tell them, you can apply for this. You might not get it.
All right, so if we deviate from what the staff recommendation is, we're taking the risk that there will be people.
There will definitely be people who apply and do not get it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Revel, followed by Burns.
Thank you. So I think that's improvement. I would support the amendment. But, I mean, the last time when we did this, it was successful. It was citywide, right? I mean, we, correct? I mean, we feel that was a successful program. Some people didn't get it. But if you're poor and you live in the first four, or you're poor and you live in, you know, the eighth, any ward, you're, you need the money the same. So I think that did prove to be successful. I'm just, and I, and I sense that the idea of concentrating, and I understand that we can then see a concentrated impact that might have sort of a exponential, some kind of an impact. But I think that would be over a longer period of time, and we don't know that we're going to funding. What I'm understanding is this isn't a permanent year. It would be great if we knew that every year we were going to do this. So I guess I'm just questioning impact of concentrating it geographically. I, I support expanding it geographically. I think expanding to the eighth ward is fine. But I would also support expanding it citywide. I just think that the impact that we're looking for by concentrating it, we would need to commit to an extended period of time. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Burns.
So we have funding enough for 150 families. We have 60 families, more or less, who've signed up in census tract 892. If we add now the eighth ward, I'm thinking there, we still will have more money left over than we have eligible families if we add that second census tract. So it seems as though, and we don't want to have to come back again and again to do, to figure this out. So it sounds as though we ought to expand it beyond more than just the eighth ward. And I, so I guess the question is, do we expand it to the whole city?
And I can just provide some data on that. So we have estimates for 8102 that slightly less than 100 households would qualify. However, our estimates from the same, you know, census data showed that we had 150 households in census tract 892, and what we've successfully gotten is 60. So it is, I think, very likely that if we expand only to 8102, we will be back here asking again for further guidance about how to expand.
Right, yeah, thanks. So I guess the question is, do we add just one more census tract, or do we open it up to the whole city? So, colleagues, what do you think?
What census tract is next on the list, if this is still Councilmember Revel's floor?
I think I'm up next.
So it's Councilmember, hold on, so just, I'm, I'm got a multimedia crisis here. Councilmember Burns, followed by Hadekakis.
So that was my question, is what is the next census tract that would be most appropriate for something like this? If we went 8092, 8102, using that same thought process, what would be the next appropriate census tract?
I believe that the, and I can't remember the number of the census tract, but I believe it would be in the second ward just south of 892.
Okay. Yeah, I would be comfortable, because that's, so before I knew the numbers, because I asked, that was one question I have for you, Allison, was like, what are we, what are, what are the rough estimates of the amount of people that might be eligible in 8102 and some of the other census tracts? So thank you, thank you for that. That was helpful. My, I was, before I got that, I was ready to support.
For information. Just because I think there was a disconnect in, in what you asked. Were you asking, what is the next geographic census tract? Or were you asking, using the metric that we use to choose your census tract as the number one census tract, which one would be next using that, those methods?
And that's the question you answered, right? Okay, good. So before I knew that, had that information, I was going to ask, as long as you were comfortable with, with the motion that is on the table, I was going to be fine, because I don't think that motion includes the second ward. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Okay, because you seconded it. So that's, once you, I was like, okay, if you support this, then I support it. But with that information, I think just setting this up is a priority, or prioritizing what happens next. And so I would support a motion where it expands it to 8102. If that, if it's not exhausted at this point, that point, then whatever census tract in the second ward that you mentioned, and then after that, maybe opening up, or then opening up to the, to the rest of the city. Because I think there's some value in not, in, and there's some value in trying to open it up in a way where everybody who is eligible receives the grant. I think if we can achieve that in the end, that's a really good thing. And we might be able to do that in 8102 in the, in the census tract. We might be able to do it in 8102. If not, we might be able to do it if we include the, if not the census tract, maybe a census block within the second ward. So that's where I'm at right now.
Can I just respond really quickly?
Of course.
I just, I just, I'm a little bit worried about logistics with that. It, it's, we're already talking about basically having the payments go out. Like having, essentially, it's going to be like three different programs at this point, because some people have applied in April. And we're, you know, we've been asking them to wait to try to get as many people as possible. And, you know, then we said, well, we'll wait to see what council wants to do tonight. Then tomorrow, basically, we're going to say, okay, we're not going to make you wait any longer. Come in and get your cards. Then we're going to spend a month or two doing outreach in a new census tract. You know, we went, we went door to door in 89, like we, and that took a while. That took like two weeks, because there were two of us, and we went door to door. What? Okay, there were also some other people who helped a little bit, but basically, there were two of us. And so it takes, it takes a little while. And then if we then wait to find out how many people we can get from that, and then we start a new census tract, I just, the logistics are a little bit tricky. I totally understand what you're saying, but I just wanted to call out, it'll really push.
And it could be all of Evanston, but prioritizing those census tracts. I think that's the way to address that concern.
If I could just add one more point of information. So our, our total estimate for qualifying households is 351 that would meet this. If you factor in that there were 150 in our estimate for 892, we know that this is a little bit bigger. And so I, I'm not sure that, you know, I, I don't think it would be an overwhelming amount that, that would be, you know, banging down the doors applying.
So yeah, I think it, now I deviate from kind of what I expressed before. But I think in order to address that concern, then I would support just opening up to all of Evanston, but prioritizing those census tracts, and then moving on to the others after that. That's all, cheers. Thank you.
I'm sorry, there's a, there's a long line. I'll promise I'll get to it, but I just want to make sure. Point of information. Did you just say that if you were to extrapolate the uptake rate from 892 across the city, we would not have a waiting list, or we would not have a lottery?
That's my math.
Potentially.
I'm not, I'm asking an arithmetic question, not a reality question. Like, is it true that the total number of your estimate eligible across the city, whatever, times that ratio is less than what we have room for?
Right, and the, yeah.
Yeah, because one is 90. I thought I counted 90 to Revel's. I think that was her point. So we have 90 slots left. But there would be, there's probably more than that.
So then, and.
Even if our, the 300 and some is wrong, it's probably more than 90, though.
And if you take out the 150 from 892, then you have an estimate of 200 for all the remaining census tracts.
Oh, so 150, 3, 3 something includes 150.
Yeah, I mean, like, the way, the way I would say it is, we're, we've, we've gone through 40% of our eligible slots, and we've gone through more than 40% of our eligible people.
Yeah, no, I didn't realize 150 was included. Okay, yep.
All right, sorry for that. Councilmember Hadekakis?
Okay, so that, that kind of changes my, the math I had in my head. But I would be in support of opening, opening this up to the entire city and leaving it up to staff to prioritize the census tracts that they feel are most adversely affected.
Okay, so at this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time, because you've all spoken. So we go back to those requesting to speak for a second time, beginning with Councilmember Harris with four and a half minutes left.
I was going to push my button instead of my microphone. I agree. I think if you're eligible, you're eligible. And I don't want to just say this one part of our city is eligible. If you're eligible, I would like to do, as Councilmember Burns said, we prioritize eight. Of course, I have to say prioritize second, but I want to prioritize whoever comes to the plate. With the caveat that they know this is a lottery, it's going to be based upon these metrics, then it isn't a, I thought I was going to. You'll have that, because people feel entitled. But that we open it up to the community, because it's all of Evanston. We're one Evanston, nine wards, one Evanston. And I want to help any resident that is eligible for this program. So that would be my request. And if you need people to help knock on doors, I do knock on doors. I have a Facebook post last week. I knock on doors. So I will help do that to make sure our residents know. But I think it's important, everyone here is important, and everyone needs the opportunity to thrive. So I think, again, we prioritize, but it's open for everyone. You don't have to come back. We don't have to have this discussion again.
Continuing on second cracks, Councilmember Newsma with four and a quarter minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're heading in the right direction here. But let's discuss how these two particular census tracts would be prioritized, if indeed the program is available for everybody in Evanston. What does that mean, practically speaking? Is there more outreach, more of a concerted effort on those census tracts?
I mean, thinking on the fly here, because this is the first, it's not like I've had time to think about this. But what I think that would mean is that we would say that people have to apply by a certain date. We might do more outreach in some areas than the other. And then we would sort of organize them by census tract. And then, like the, you know, let's say we got 100 people for 90 slots. And a perfect scenario would be that the last 10 weren't in the new census tracts. You just wipe them anyway, and then those are the census tracts. You know, you organize it by census tracts, and then you get rid of the stuff at the bottom that you can't. But we'd have to, we'd still have to do a lottery if 91 of those were in the two census tracts.
And I suspect that if the program is structured as lottery, there might be slightly less uptake. If we're doing math, that introduces another kind of variable.
Maybe, but we also get people apply from, like, out of the country. So you never, like, it's hard to sort of.
I like what Councilmember Harris is saying about making it available to the whole city. If there's a way we can reasonably prioritize those, yeah, two census tracts where poverty is particularly acute, great. But we don't know at this point exactly what that would look like. So I don't know if that means we're not ready to approve it tonight. But.
Yeah, we're ready to make that choice.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Continuing with second cracks, Councilmember Reed with 2:45 left.
Thank you. Well, so I withdraw my motion. It was made out of what too often human decisions are made out of the scarcity mindset. And clearly, there is an abundance. And with that in mind, I think it certainly does make sense to go citywide. I support Councilmember Burns's proposal of prioritizing in some way, certainly the districts, whether it's prioritizing in the way that, you know, some hypothetical lottery, lottery. But I think what we're hearing is that based on the number of folks that were actually eligible, that we wouldn't even likely have a lottery. It's, like, it's possible, but probable. One thing that this really makes me think is, is this program too strict? Why is it, we know that there is extreme need in, throughout our city, in the fifth ward and the eighth ward. And so if we can't get 150 families with children in the fifth ward to get on to our guaranteed income program, what's wrong with our program? And that's really what this is leading me to think. So actually, if, can I have staff respond to that? Why, why, what's going on?
I mean, staff is making their way to the, to the mic, but I just want to interject here, because I was going to say this later. Anyways, I kind of had a lot of sort of disconnected conversations with staff throughout this process, where staff would be like, oh, my gosh, I can't believe we're doing such a bad job of getting sign-ups. And I'd be like, whoa, we've got so many sign-ups. This program was designed to exactly stick the landing, where if every single eligible household was aware of it and signed up, we would have precisely the right number without one excess or one room left to, to, one slot left. And it's funny, I was talking about this issue last night with my wife, and she was like, do you remember how totally underwater we were when we had kids under five? Like, like, what a, what a, what a shock, if anybody is aware of this program. And I think, I think it's very, it's a, it's a constituency that is truly underwater. And I just think it's, I think it's really important for us as an organization at all times to remember, most people don't hear what we're saying. Most people don't hear what we're saying. And I think in general, when we assume that most people hear what we're saying, we make bad choices. So I found these numbers to be kind of maybe a little better than I expected, more or less in line with my expectation. But I'll get off my soapbox and actually allow the person who's asked the question to answer it.
I appreciate your comments.
And I want to be clear, this isn't like a, you know, I'm not accusing staff of, you know, dropping the ball or doing anything wrong here. I'm really trying to think through what, you know, how were the guidelines set up to get us here? Sorry, go ahead.
So we chose a population that stuck out in the E Plan as the population that needs the most help and coincidentally is the population that's hardest to reach, which is, I think, you know, it's also in the memo. One of my concerns about going in this direction is that this is such a hard population to reach. We, I mean, we were like chasing people down if they had a stroller while we were out knocking. down if they had a stroller while we were out knocking doors. We tried not to be creepy about it, but it's just, it is a population of people who are not in the district necessarily. Maybe they have older siblings, but maybe not. We went through as many community partners as we could, but if you fit into the criteria that we identified through the E plan as the group that needs the most help, you are potentially not connected to daycares and other supports that require financial commitment. And so it's a really, really hard population to find and get in touch with, which is why we went door to door in the first place with flyers and stuff. And, and we also were basing our data off of estimates, which is another concern I have about this direction we're going as well, is that we're again basing our data off of estimates and we can only do the best we can, which is why we had proposed the age increase instead. It was concrete. We knew how many families, we knew how many households, you know, exactly. And we knew we could reach them through District 65. I completely understand why we would want to open it up to the whole city and, and, you know, we did that the first round, but it's, it's a hard population to reach and we're, we're just guessing at the numbers the best we can. Census data is notoriously tricky and so that's, that's all there is.
Continuing with second cracks, Councilmember Burns with two minutes, 50 seconds left.
In addition to what was said, I just also want to say that it is possible that the, the families are not there. You know, the data itself is unreliable. We know that. They do the best they can, but it's an estimation. And, and so I just, I want to, I just want to underscore that point, that it's possible that we, that they're not there. They have, there are families with children, but they're older. Because we didn't say all families with children. This thing would have blew up if that were the case and we would have had well over what we needed just from this census tract alone. But it was, what was it? Up to five or something? You know, so it's unreliable and also it's not static, right? So I don't know what, what year were we going off of?
We were basing it off our 2022 five-year census estimates.
And so that's 22, 22, 2022 is, is good in that it's not, you know, 2020 or longer, but it's, it's static. So it's, it's a, it's a community that is lower income and therefore probably a lot more transient. They're moving around to different places, you know, even after one leaves perhaps, depending on rent increases and all types of factors. So I actually think with all the outreach that was done, this is probably a representative group for that census tract. I, we did talk to Allison about potentially raising the limits. I do think that's something to consider. I don't know if that was in, in the packet, but that is something to consider because my initial thought with all of this was like, let's just reach out to the district, right? They have, they know what, what students are, are, you know, are at this age group and they, staff rightfully said, but for this particular group, they're not necessarily in the district. I think they do have some early childhood programs, but you know, there's only a certain amount of slots and, and yes, there are some other early childhood providers in, in Evanston, but it, it just, it complicated things not having everybody in one school district. So I think that is something worth considering as we expand it to, to the city. Maybe we do increase the age. I think that obviously changes the numbers. I don't think 396, right? Yeah. So that changes the numbers. So, but it is, exactly. Yeah. No, I hear you. But I, that was it. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Reed. I thought he was going to make a motion, another motion for us to consider, but maybe not.
Yeah. So at this time, there's no lights and no, oh, so Councilmember Reed is the only person asking to speak. He's speaking for a third time. He has a minute left. And I would say, I think this conversation is sort of happened at this point. I would, I would recommend that some motion be made for council's consideration.
Yeah, I will, I just have one question and then I plan to make a motion. Can staff just describe the criteria for, and that's really what I was trying to get to with my last line of questioning, which is just, what is the criteria, just for the record out loud for eligibility?
Yes. There were three criteria. The fam, the household would have to reside within the boundaries of census tract 1892, have at least one child five or under, and make less than 185% of federal poverty.
Okay. And then staff's initial recommendation is just to expand the criteria to allow for this to go to folks who have what age children? Second graders?
That's right. We're proposing to expand it up to second grade. And we've worked with the district to get estimates so that we can know pretty precisely that we would be able to match almost exactly our number of slots. And, you know, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. I interrupted.
Oh, and, you know, they have, have those households addresses and can contact them. And so it would be very seamless in terms of recruiting those additional households.
All right. I'm, I'm going to move, I want to remind my colleagues that we are not the folks implementing this. And staff has given us a, a way that makes sense to me to just hit their numbers. And I think it does, it, it just expands the criteria for it. So I'm going to move staff's initial proposal as I did at the top and stick with that. And I encourage everyone to vote for it. The plan to just get the folks enrolled makes sense. It sticks with the original goals. My understanding of ARPA is that, you know, that we wanted to spend it in the, the two census tracts that were identified, which to the best of my understanding were, one was in the fifth, one was in the eighth. And those are the two tracks with the highest rates of childhood poverty to best of my memory and understanding. And so I, I would just encourage us to stick with it and, and vote for staff's plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed renews his initial motion to accept, to adopt the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Councilmember Sufferton seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
So I'm a little confused. I thought we were all moving towards citywide.
So Councilmember Reed made a maybe different motion than you might have been expecting.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
And Councilmember Reed?
Jeez, that's not what I thought. Aye.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, there is a tie. I break the tie by voting aye. The motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. I have a bunch of instructions from the consent agenda. I'm told that the minutes need to be removed. Is that right? So the minutes need to be removed. Items A3 and A12 did not receive positive or negative recommendation in APW, so they'll be removed. Also, items A15, A16, and A17 are removed for consideration for introduction and action.
I'm going to add A18 to that list, please.
And item A18 also for potential introduction and action. That's my list so far. What else?
I'd like to add A7, A11, A13, A14, and AP1.
And HCDC1.
A2, please, Mr. Mayor.
So at this time, we have M1, A2, A3, A7, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, A18, HCDC1, and AP1. Is there anything else?
ED1, please.
ED1. So let's read the list again, one last time. M1, A2, A3, A17, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, A18, HCDC1, ED1, and AP1. Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves adoption of the consent agenda except for items M1, A2, A3, A7, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, A18, HCDC1, ED1, and AP1. Councilmember Revel seconds.
A8, I think. Did you skip A8?
Did you say A8? I never heard A8. So, read it again. The motion, as I understand it, made by Councilmember Nusma and seconded by Councilmember Revel, is to adopt the consent agenda with the following exceptions. M1, A2, A3, A7, A8, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A17, A18, HCDC1, ED1, and AP1. Set. Seeing no concerns, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda except for the 16 items previously read is passed. We now move through those items. Is there a motion relative to item M1?
I will move to table M1 until our next meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to table the minutes of the 2024 Regular City Council meeting to the next, to the June, July 22nd meeting. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the disposition of the, the action relative to the June 24th City Council meetings has been tabled until the July 22nd City Council meeting. Now on item A2, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. Now on item A3, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I do. I'd like to move approval of the contract award with John Keno and Company Incorporated for the Evanston Dog Beach Access Project bid 2418.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the contract award. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Burns?
Laura, I have questions. So my first question is, if we don't move forward with this proposal, do we have an alternative proposal that staff supports to, that would construct a more direct ramp, something that doesn't meander around, but a direct ramp close to where the existing entrance is, that we don't necessarily feel will get us through the next 20 years, but could get us through the summer perhaps, or longer, that staff would support? And if so, what would that look like? What would timeline look like? Would we need to do another bid? And then an idea of what, what that would cost? And the reason why I set it up that way is because I, I know that there's concerns that some of the other alternatives may not be able to withstand erosion in all the waves that come up, come with that. But if we want to go back to the drawing board because we feel like 800,000 is not something we're prepared to spend at this time, what would an alternative look like that staff would support?
My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. If we choose not to move forward with this option, then we don't really have another option that has been really thought through and designed. I personally have concerns about putting something out there that's temporary, that's not really specific to the area, but I haven't really looked in details to the engineering that would be involved. If we want to do a separate option and something that is more temporary, less, less permanent structure, because one of the reasons why the structure we have is more expensive, it's very robust, it operates at different lake levels, different sand levels, it's designed to stay in service through a lot of different conditions. I would still recommend having an engineer involved, having them look at the design, make sure that it's put together appropriately.
And it, and so if we go long, I was asking for a short-term solution. If we go long-term, but again, build something that's more direct, near the existing entrance that could withstand erosion, waves, et cetera, is the feeling that it would, the feeling isn't that that will cost more than what is currently being proposed, right? Or it could?
It could. Originally, we had presented to council in 2022, two concepts. One that was like a very direct switchback, down and back, all located on the existing footprint of the Dog Beach. And a second option, which is the one that we ended up developing, where there was a pathway that was partially on the adjacent beach space and only a small portion of the path ultimately ended up on the Dog Beach. And that was, at the time, that second option was found preferable because it was anticipated to be less in cost, not a lot less, but slightly less in cost. Part of what's driving that is the part that's actually on the Dog Beach, which has to be engineered to resist wave action, a variety of sand levels, that is much less. So you're protecting a lot less infrastructure that's in the direct path of the waves. And the third thing is this desire to minimize the actual footprint on the Dog Beach and the amount of time that the Dog Beach has restrictions on its access during construction, because the Dog Beach is not huge. And the people who were users of the Dog Beach requested and made a push for doing something that minimized what was on the Dog Beach itself.
And from talking to Michael in Parks and Rec, he was saying that if, if, if we ended up deciding to construct something close to the existing entrance, which is further, which is on the northern side, I want to say, that we would just need to create another temporary entrance on the southern side? Or how would that, what would that look like? Or you, do you think the only option would be to shut down the Dog Beach during the period of construction?
I believe we would work with Parks and Rec to try to create an alternate entrance at the south end of the beach, though it's temporary. It would not be ideal, but in order to do the construction. I don't think that there's a strong desire to permanently shut down the Dog Beach for any length of time.
I'll say what was, has been the most compelling to me is the distance, but that someone, whether they're on a wheelchair, that they're manually operating, or on a walker, would have to travel to get from the, I guess, the current, well, really to get to access the ramp, no matter where the parking is. Because I know that's a, a different question is, you know, do we use the, the proposed parking area or there's another area where boats are, where there might be parking? But aside from that, with the current, with where the existing entrance is for the ramp, ramp that's being proposed, they still would have to get to it, no matter where they park. would have to get to it, no matter where they park. Um, and then, yeah, go ahead, please.
So if I could just interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
But the, the only existing ADA parking in the area is by the entrance to Clark Street Beach. And if you were walking from that ADA parking to Clark Street, or to the, um, Dog Beach, then the distance, whether you take this meandering path that we are proposing, or you stay on the sidewalk, uh, is basically the same. That part is the same. The difference would be if you take the meandering path that goes across the adjacent beach, where you enter, there's actually a very short ramp to get on the beach, versus if we build the entire ramp on the beach, then there's much longer ramp to traverse on the beach. What is being speculated about is providing alternate ADA parking in the parking lot that's designated for boats right now. And we have not looked at doing that at all. There's some operational logistics things that I think we could work to try to overcome. But currently, that area is restricted only to people who have boat trailers who've paid a permit fee. And the parking lot is not designed or striped to create an ADA space. Can we change that? Yes, we can. It's something we could look at. It's kind of a separate issue from this particular project, though. Would it be looking at making operational changes? Most likely.
How much time do I have? Um, this is an important point here. So you're saying that if someone was in, in the current ADA parking lot, if they were there, and they walked directly to the entrance of the Dog Beach, current existing entrance, that it's the same distance than if they went on the proposed ramp?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a little over two hundred feet.
Either way.
Either, and it's a hundred feet from the parking to where, um, the new proposed entrance of the Dog Ranch should be. And then whether you're walking on the sidewalk
Wait, if you say that, that last part.
Okay, so there's, there's the, the parking, one hundred feet you walk to get to where the new proposed entrance of the Dog Beach would be.
Okay.
And then if you stayed on the sidewalk, you didn't have that entrance, you stayed on the sidewalk and walked to the Dog Beach entrance, it's, it's slightly over two hundred feet. If you get on the proposed parallel pathway, it's slightly over two hundred feet. So it's, it's the same distance if your starting point is that ADA parking or the drop-off turnaround at Clark Street Beach. It's the same distance.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, so you're saying the, from ADA, current ADA parking to proposed entrance is the same as the boat area parking that's being suggested?
No, the boat area parking, that is a different situation.
So help me understand, what is a hundred feet away? Because I'm hearing a hundred feet and I'm hearing two hundred feet.
I wish I had a Google map, but...
I think we can make that possible. Can we make that possible, uh, manager? So, because that would be helpful, because that, that's the conversation I was having at APW while I wasn't here. I was talking to Michael Callahan, and we had a map up, and it was very helpful.
I know there's a resident here that sent us all maps with these.
Um, yeah, we can call them up if needed, but I think we're good for now.
I don't need a minute to summon Google. So, may I while she's setting that up?
Uh, Councilmember Burns, do you want to just hold the floor while we wait, or do you want to allow the conversation to go along and come back?
So I could simplify the answer.
Um, I want to hold, because I don't want things to get confused. I got, I know what I need out of this discussion, and then I'll let y'all have it after that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the residents can see this, that are virtual, but this is the Clark Street Beach entrance. There's ADA parking that's right in this area.
Hmm.
These are ADA spaces. To get from here to here is one hundred feet.
And what's the here to here again? I'm sorry, from the parking lot to where?
From the ADA parking lot to where the proposed entrance for the Dog Beach is, is here. If you want to walk on that new proposed path to get over here, it's two hundred feet. If we don't build that and you want to walk to the current entrance along the sidewalk, it's two hundred feet. It's the, it's the same distance whether you're taking the proposed new path or the existing sidewalk to the existing entrance.
Okay, so current ADA parking, what about ADA parking to existing entrance? I think that's what I'm missing, to the existing entrance.
Right, that's the existing ADA parking to the existing entrance.
Is a hundred feet?
Yes. Now, all of this stuff over is behind a, a gate, so...
Wait, hold on, I just, either I'm correcting a typo or I'm revealing my own ignorance. Isn't, didn't you, did you say yes to a hundred feet or yes to two hundred feet?
Oh, I'm sorry. So total, the distance is three hundred feet if you're coming from the parking. One hundred feet to the new entrance.
But the question is ADA parking to current entrance?
That's three hundred feet, but it's three hundred feet if we create the ADA pathway also. The ADA pathway exactly parallels, parallels this and enters like right here. So it's, you either come along here and enter at this point, or you walk over slightly and then exactly parallel this road and enter slightly to this east. It's the same distance from the existing ADA parking. If you want to create ADA parking right next the existing entrance, there is a whole boat unloading area and boat parking situation that's behind gated access. Can that be changed? Yes. If you're thinking that you will park here where the cars are already parked, those aren't striped spaces for boat trailers, but there's no sidewalk there. And so we would probably have to do some changes to add some sidewalk in order to make it ADA compliant, but it could be done. I would want to look at the best way to do it. I don't want to engineer it up here tonight, but...
So the current entrance is not directly at the Dog Beach? You have to take some other route?
Well, right now, this is the entrance to the Dog Beach right here.
So that's the distance that I'm talking about? Like how, what is the distance between the parking lot and, and that entrance? Because I thought that's the current entrance.
The existing parking that's ADA, that's in the area, open to the public, it's a total of three hundred feet.
Okay.
The new pathway, if we build a new, the proposed new ADA entrance, it will be three hundred feet.
Okay. Um, and then, yeah, still need, would need to understand then the parking, um, a point Michael brought up is, we wouldn't necessarily want to do parking in that cul-de-sac area because that's a turnaround for the boats and every, and people bringing boats in and out, which is probably an important area. And then the only other area that would make sense, you have to, you're going to cross, you're going to make people cross a driveway that people are using to bring in boats, and so that, there's that. But if there's a way to solve for a distance, that to me is compelling enough to pursue an alternative option, but it may not mean that it's less expensive. And so I think that's just something that we have to understand. I, I know that's what, I, I know people are suggesting that, but for me personally, I would want to support something that our staff, who, you know, would feel comfortable with. And so we would have to see what, what that, how that number changes, if at all. But I do believe that if there's a way to make this a more direct path into the Dog Beach area, um, that that is a good thing, you know, for the people who are going to be using it and needing it. And that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Reed, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate, uh, the commentary from, from Ms. Biggs, and I might have some additional questions for her. I'd like to review how we got here, uh, really quickly, and, you know, noting the number of times this issue has come to council and noting the number of stakeholder meetings that have happened already. So this, I'm going to speak kind of quickly so I can get it all in. Uh, November fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two is when we added this Dog Beach design to, uh, to our contract with Shoreline, or to our Shoreline contract, rather. Um, February twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-three, uh, the, um, consultants presented two proposals to city council, uh, and we provided some feedback to the consultant, and, you know, they went ahead with that design criteria and proceeded with their work. Uh, that work included a number of stakeholder meetings. On March eighth of twenty-twenty-three and March twenty-third of twenty-twenty-three, there were stakeholder meetings involving the Clark Street Beach Bird Sanctuary folks who were concerned about the native plants. Uh, that continued on June seventh of twenty-twenty-three when staff brought in a biologist that we paid some additional money for to weigh in on this process. Um, then jumping back, uh, a week to May thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, there was an onsite meeting with Dog Beach people, some members, you know, self-appointed members of the Dog Beach community. Uh, that meeting also included members of the Commission on Aging and Disability, an informal meeting on the beach.
Yes.
Uh, and then on June eighth of twenty-twenty-three, uh, the Commission on Aging and Disability formally considered this at their meeting. Um, the next milestone on my calendar here is December eleventh of twenty-twenty-three, uh, which is when this council approved the budget for this year. Uh, and the number we penciled in and agreed on, uh, on December eleventh was five hundred thousand dollars. So we knew back in December that this was not going to be cheap. We expected it to be expensive to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we then advertised the RFP in April, and, uh, here we are today. Uh, so really, I think what this amounts to is a project that has gone over budget. It's really no more complicated than that. We had budgeted five hundred thousand dollars. The lowest bid came back at, uh, six ninety-three, five seventy-seven. Let me just say six ninety-four to keep it, uh, to keep it, uh, simple. So we have three choices in front of us. We could approve this as is and eat the additional cost. Yeah, we could, uh, attempt to reduce the cost by going back to the drawing board and amending the scope, or we could simply say, no, I'm sorry, this is too expensive. So I'd like to kind of explore the, those last two alternatives. Is it possible to reduce the cost by amending the scope? Uh, it's, that's a question for staff.
Um, we did actually reach out to the, uh, lowest bidder, uh, through our purchasing department, and they, and we asked for a more detailed breakdown, but they really just declined to participate in that, saying that it was too challenging to do that at this point in time. And so we cannot make them. I mean, that's, that's the short story. We can't make them give a breakdown.
I said amending the scope, but by revising the designs, is there some way to design our way?
Oh, changing the design?
Is there some way to design our way, uh, to a cost savings here?
We could award the project and then try to design, but we would not probably save a lot of money doing that. We could not award the project, try to value engineer it, bid it again, and then, um, depending on what was bid.
We'd be taking our chances.
You're taking your chances.
Meanwhile, costs continue to go up.
If the project stays substantially the same and the design doesn't change a lot, it will be more expensive.
And so it's a normal reaction to say, holy cow, we're over budget by a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Is there any way we can do a better design? One of the proposals, which would seem to make sense, would be to put the ramp on the beach, but that may actually increase cost because more of the infrastructure that is exposed to the waves and the sand and the elements, uh, is, you know, more of that is on, is on the beach, and that might very well increase the cost.
Yes.
Right? And I'll just point out now that the lake level today is not going to be the same next year or the year after that. I think we are at, uh, about five hundred and seventy-nine feet. That's what I got from the Army Corps of Engineers chart and the...
I think we're about two feet above.
Okay, so maybe...
The average, but, um, it's come down really fast.
And in two thousand thirteen, it was five hundred and seventy-six feet. And eight years later, in twenty-twenty-one, it was five hundred and eighty-two feet. So a six feet swing in, in eight years. And that's what our professional engineers who have knowledge of lakefront infrastructure are designing for, and attempting to minimize our exposure to those costs by putting as much of the infrastructure as possible, not on the beach itself.
Yes.
Right? So my takeaway here, my educated evaluation is that it's probably unlikely that we would be able to engineer some costs out of this, to design some costs out of this. Um, so what if we just said no? What if we just said this is too expensive, we can't do it? What are we, are we exposing ourselves and potential liability from ADA, uh, from the ADA side?
Um, I could defer that to the Corporation Council, but I will just say, overall, while there are some exceptions, ADA is a federal and state law that we are required to provide disability access for all of our programs and services.
Right, so we kind of have to do it. If we want, I mean, is it safe to say if we want to have a Dog Beach, it needs to be ADA compliant?
Yes. That is my understanding. I ultimately would defer to our Corporation Council.
So with...
Who is nodding her head?
With the facts, as I understand them, and given the expertise of the consultants that we hired to do this, I guess my conclusion is we stay the course and, um, you know, approve the budget, approve the project at the, at the higher than budgeted number. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
That was convincing. Um, I have, uh, appreciate both of the, the two, my two colleagues that came before me. Um, I think I just have two questions to add here. Um, but I actually think my one question was answered by Councilmember Newsma. So, uh, I just want to make sure that, Ms. Biggs, that you agree with Councilmember Newsma's assessment there as to the reason why a shorter, um, pathway could not be built? Is that, is that what the consultant shared with us?
There, there was originally a, in the original two concepts that were presented, and understanding that we initially only went to the consultant and asked for a single concept, a switchback ramp. They came back and said, hey, we think we can save you a little money if you're willing to try this alternate layout. But that switchback ramp is going to be expensive. If the city wants to explore doing something that is, uh, more off-the-shelf temporary thing, it's hard for me to comment on that without, um, really weighing in and looking at the details, but, um...
If I can jump in there, just, uh, uh, yeah, I'm certainly talking about something permanent. I think the argument was made really well earlier that, you know, that our, it's our historic lakefront, we want to make sure that we have something that dignifies that lakefront, uh, and that adds to the character of it. So certainly talking about a permanent infrastructure, um, with this question.
Yes, so it would likely be more expensive to build the entire ADA ramp in a permanent construction all the way on the Dog Beach.
So the, um, but my, my question initially was, um, not necessarily is, okay, is it is, is it more expensive? Certainly, I think that is a part of the question, but is there a, a structural, um, concern about building? I think that's kind of where Councilmember Newsma is going, both, you know, with certainly cost, but also with the long-term, um, durability of the structure if it is built out into the lakefront, or built out directly on, with the shorter pathway.
I'm sorry, I'm just asking for clarification. The original switchback design that was tucked up against the Revampen Rock Wall, or the design that's being currently proposed?
I'm sorry. And Ms. Biggs, to be clear, I'm really responding to the proposal that was, uh, put forward, um, by residents and, you know, the recommendations of the Plan Commission, and responding to what folks during public comment have shared about, um, not wanting to, you know, take this long winding pathway down to, um, the circuitous route down to the Dog Beach. And so that's what I mean by shorter path.
Sure.
My apologies for the clarification.
So I reached, I actually, um, reached out today when I received the information to the design engineer of record and asked him what are his thoughts. And they were similar to mine. And then I reached out to our public work staff and asked them questions about operability. But if the ramp is something that is designed to be removed during certain times of year... But if the ramp is something that is designed to be removed during certain times of year or certain water conditions, then you run into questions about who's removing it, how is that providing ADA access and keeping the Dog Beach open when we've removed the ADA accessibility? And last winter, we kept the Dog Beach open all the time. So it's not, we don't want something that gets removed periodically. Now, when, let's say that you don't remove it and you have this off-the-shelf thing. When lake levels are low, and so the sand is, is stable, then it will probably be okay in most cases. There will be challenges towards keeping it free of snow and ice during, the closer you get to the water level, the harder it is to keep it free of snow and ice issues during the winter. But that's fine. But when the sand and lake levels start changing, when the lake levels creep up, that access would be the first thing to become submerged. So theoretically, the Dog Beach is still open, but now that access no longer works. We have to create a new access. If the, the sand moves, the sand levels have changed two feet or so since the 2022 survey. If the sand levels drop, I mean, the sand just moves, it's sand, when the, if the sand levels drop, then all of a sudden, that doesn't meet the ground. And now you, it's not applicable to ADA anymore unless we go out and fix it because there's a gap. So I think the biggest concerns we have are, which we have not looked at the engineering, is it may seem like a cheaper option before we do anything, but there are a lot of challenges with that option and keeping it in operation under a variety of conditions and, you know, basically anytime the Dog Beach is open, regardless of what the water level or the sand levels do.
Thank you. All right, well, with, with this, what is the motion on the floor? The motion that Councilmember Kelly made was to accept.
The motion before us is to approve the contract.
I don't understand, I, what do you mean, the motion? I just read the item for discussion.
No, you made a motion.
Okay.
Sorry, Councilmember Reed.
And I'm sorry, yeah, you just made the motion as the chair of APW, which is kind of our standard, which doesn't necessarily have to be. Okay. I'll, I'll hold here. I, I, I do think, well, one, actually, I have one last thing, and how much time do I have left, Mr. Mayor?
Two twenty.
Two twenty, okay. I'll, I'll close with this and actually ask our legal department, just one procedural question, which in part is how we got here. I, I do feel as though there wasn't, I heard Councilmember Newsma say that our Aging and Disability Commission looked at this and had an opportunity to, to discuss it. I don't think it got the attention that it, it seemingly didn't get the attention that it deserved at that point, not to anyone's fault, but just the way government works. As Mayor Biss noted earlier, folks are not listening to us here, you're not hearing us here. And I do think that this going back to Preservation Commission did give us an opportunity to at least hear some additional voices and hear concerns from folks and who are suffering with disabilities in our community and a wide variety of disabilities. It was really refreshing to be reminded of, you know, it's, it's not just folks that are in, you know, wheelchairs. And so I'm, I still am curious about the woman's testimony, the person's testimony about, you know, having, I think, COPD and not being able to walk as far and, you know, this long path making it maybe more difficult for them to, to access. This really does, you know, it, it makes sense to me that we want to try to create the shortest path possible. I hear Councilmember Newsma's, you know, engineering brain going and noting that there could be difficulties here. I'm inclined to accept the proposal as, as put forward. We've, we've gone through this, but I also think in closing here that this is, I think, an opportunity, I'll say this to the Preservation Commission members, an opportunity for folks to review their bylaws, review our procedures. I think this is an opportunity for us to think, how do we, you know, the city council, how do we conduct outreach to vulnerable communities like folks who are suffering with disabilities? And how do we reach a wide audience of those folks and not just the, you know, the typical archetype of, of certain disabilities? And so I, I think this is a moment to reflect, and I, and I think I'm going to support the direction that we've been going thus far. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So, and thank you, Laura, for the presentation and answering the questions. You know, the spirit of the ADA law is to get folks who have mobility challenges to their destination as quickly and as easily as possible. And both of these plans, you know, one is, it's a 300-foot versus a 500-foot landing at the same place. So in terms of water rising and falling, it's the same difference. One is going to be 500 feet, one is, one is 50 feet. We can have a permanent ramp at the entranceway, and I will ask for, this is part of the problem of, and I agree with, you know, moving it to council is that we don't get to see all the presentations, but if we can do a permanent ADA ramp at the point of entrance, the parking spaces are available right there. We can create, and yes, we'll need car, you know, card swipe so that people can get in the same way a boat person would. I've been taking pictures every day. I've never seen it even nearly, even close to halfway full. So that's a very open lot. The other parking spaces, we're sending, we're sending people with mobility challenge all the way over past Clark Street Beach to park their car, make their way, as you pointed out, thank you, 100 feet to the entrance, and then meander 200 feet down to land at the same place if we create, we can make one equal ramp of cement. And, you know, I'm not as concerned about cost, I'm mostly concerned about developing the right access here. Yes, I, we want all one access, that's what this is about. So we could have one ramp that's even the same, it could be for everybody, but with, with rails that goes down, so if the water rises, whoever, everybody has the ability to enter the same. But folks with mobility challenges, while the beach is open, will be able to park right there and walk 50 feet down to the beach, which is what we're hearing over and over again from folks. Please don't make us, send us down past Clark Street in the hustle and bustle, park north of that, and then meander 300 feet instead of 50. So I feel we really do owe it to our mobility-challenged residents to explore that, to, to look at that option, to look at the cost. Again, about entering right there at the beach, you're going to the Dog Beach, you know, we're not going to send you to some other beach, we're going to bring you to the Dog Beach Park here, enter, and again, we don't have to use any modular units at all if we don't want, we can create a single path down, or we can do a second one, as was in one of the slides, you know, a second one adjacent to the current one that runs an extra, that runs 40, 45 feet down. There's plenty of room, and again, they're all going to land at the same place. It's what do we want to do? Make a mobility-challenged person walk 50 feet? I, I get, I'm, you know, I can't help but to believe it would cost less, but again, that to me is not the point. The point here is to respect the ADA law, which is get them there the most, the quickest, the easiest way possible. And in terms of the meetings, I mean, we all started looking at, like, the switchback, that was based on a six-foot. We hired a surveyor, and they came out, it is, it's just a little over three feet. We don't need a whole switchback. We don't, we just don't need that switchback from the beginning. That was based on this idea that we had, you know, a much higher elevation. So we don't need that anyway. So we were starting out already on a premise where when we all met, when the Dog, the Dog Beach users, along with members of the ADA, the disability community met, we also, we didn't like either one of these, just seemed like too much walking, it just didn't make sense. And then it came back now. So in terms of your whole, Jonathan, your whole schedule events, that was over a year and a half ago, that was the last meeting, and now we have this here. So I think in a way that it went to the Preservation Commission was, I wish we could see it as a little bit like dodging a bullet, that we have this opportunity now to revisit it. People have poured out saying, wait a second, we, don't make us do that, please. I think we should go back, revisit whether it's a straight-up permanent ramp right there from the entrance of the Dog Beach down, and maybe we, you know, make it just one, one very, very wide one, or maybe we make a second one adjacent with parking right there. We have to explore that. It would be, to me, disrespectful of the community to do otherwise. And, and I'm not even, you know, this is aside that it was an eight-to-eight, you know, that the Preservation Commissioners all had deep concerns about the way this is, that this is just not, they, they felt this just wasn't necessary, the, the current plan. So I would ask, I'd like to move that we please come back with, with another option. Again, I'm not concerned about cost, I'm concerned about adequately serving our mobility-challenged community. We've heard from them, we've heard them, some of them weren't here, some spoke earlier, but didn't speak tonight. I, we owe that to them. So that's what I would ask that we do this evening. And I'd also ask if we could just take a look, there's just five slides, could I, just so folks can see the visuals of the distance.
First, can you, I didn't understand your motion. Can you, what is your motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to motion to hold this, to come back with a, to, you know, whether it's, I assume it would be through Smith Group, with a proposal where, where we would have parking there, and I think some other folks, like the vision impaired, also mentioned some things that we'd like to incorporate. I think we would have money that we could use for additional things like, like, like the lock system and the, and maybe putting up some more benches and maybe.
So just, I, we do this a lot. Is the motion to hold this?
My motion is to hold this.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item, is there a second? A second.
I'll second it, yep.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this, Councilmember Saffron, seconds. The motion to, we are, not only do we not discuss it, we don't even vote on it, it's just self-executing. We are, we're a little bit without Corporation Council at this exact moment, so I'm flying slightly blind here, but the motion to hold, having received a second, is simply self-executing unless there's a motion to overturn the hold that receives a two-thirds vote. So I would ask, is there a motion to overturn the hold?
What second did you acknowledge?
Before you, before you say that, I just want to say that the bid expires in two days because we have delayed this process so much. So that bid will no, if you hold it, the bid will no longer be valid unless the bidder just chooses to make it valid for us.
Point of order, and my apologies, but that actually counts as discussion.
Okay, sorry. My apologies.
Let me, let me then do the thing that I definitely got to do, which is say, is there a motion to overturn the hold?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newsma moves to overturn the hold, is there a second? A second. Councilwoman Newsma moves to overturn the hold, Councilmember Revel, seconds. I believe that motion is also not debatable, so would the clerk please take the role on the motion to overturn the hold?
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Win, Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Sorry, I missed Councilmember Win. Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion to overturn the hold has received greater than its two-thirds required majority and carries, and therefore the hold is not, the hold is overturned. So just a quick little bit of housekeeping, at this time, four people have spoken, they've each used all of their time, one of them has their light on for a second, crack, and Councilmember Kelly is still going. So I would say, if folks want, as always, I'm happy to, not even happy, my happiness is irrelevant, as always, I follow the council's direction regarding how intensely I follow the rule, but just point of, just for your information, Councilmember Kelly, all four of you, Councilmembers Burns, Newsma, Reed, and Kelly, all have expired time. So maybe I would seek some direction from council, do y'all want a little bit more time?
I would appreciate it more time, I'll be, I'll be quick with my next comments.
I guess what I'll do then, just on the fly, and again, y'all can tell me to do whatever you want, you can tell me to do, I'll give everybody an extra minute. So at this time, Councilmember Kelly still has the floor with a minute left, and we'll allow anybody with, who's utilized all their time to have one extra minute.
Okay, well, two things. One, I will be moving to table this, but I also want to see the slides, that many council members haven't been able to see the visuals, I think, that John Kennedy presented and many members that worked on. And again, we also have a firm that, that does an ADA specialist, firms that's going to give us an estimate this week on what it will cost to put in an ADA cement permanent ramp there, and that, that will be in later this week. And I think we just need that information. It's unfair, again, mostly to the community, the disabled community, that we are not exploring this option. We have to explore this option. Could we just take a quick look? There are only five slides, can we project those?
And if you have a question to Mr. Kennedy, as always, you can ask somebody to come to the podium and answer your questions.
Does Anderson, I want to see the, the slides.
John Kennedy can have my five minutes. So you got five minutes, right?
I mean, that's not the way we do things, well, we do things much dumber than that, which is you can ask him a question and he can go on forever.
John, would you like five minutes?
Certainly, but I'll try to take less.
The slide's up?
They should be up, they were up for APW.
It would be Anderson who would queue up the slides.
They're on the bottom, they're there.
Go, go forward through this, next, oh, thank you. All right. Objectives, we're all on the same page here. The goal is to get to the beach, it's not the ramp. The alternative route is fairly straightforward, it's, there's six feet between the existing concrete walkway and the, the break wall, which runs along there. Whether it's concrete, whether it's wood, whether it's aluminum, ADA-specified aluminum ramps, any way you take it, you get down to the mats. Between the mats and the beach is another 50 feet that I measured. The problem with the current system is that it's cutting, you know, you have to come down, everybody's got to go through it, and then you have to walk another 70 feet to the south before you get beyond the rip, rip stop. This is the elevation from the side, again, it could be aluminum ramps or, or just concrete or wood. These are examples of, there's our own ADA aluminum ramp at the boat launch at the Dempster or at Church Street. There's another picture in Ocean City of a aluminum ramp, there's wood ramps, it could be concrete. The distance, as you can see here, comes from the, it's, actually, the way I measured on, on Google Earth was 177 feet from the farthest parking spot in the ADA ramp to the entrance of the new proposed plan. Then you circle around, and there's another 70 feet before you even get to the sand. The alternative is to, on the right-hand side, where you've got the ramp, 45 feet, and you could again put some handicap parking right next door to make this path to the beach eat faster. The advantages are we could get it in this summer as opposed to waiting till next year and probably running over budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly, you have 18 seconds left.
So, and I also want to mention all the issues of sending someone with a walker that distance with dogs, coming and going and trying to cross, it's a narrow path, the whole, the whole plan just simply doesn't work for a dis, it's very lovely, and if we want to do a boardwalk, that's another plan. We could discuss a boardwalk as.
So Councilmember, your time is expired, you took out a motion you wanted to make?
So I'd like to motion to table this until, maybe, Laura, if you could help me out, we really need to see this option, bringing our mobility-challenged residents closer to the entrance with a ramp, a cement ramp from the entrance, parking right there. Would that be, I mean, to, again, we have somebody coming in with, we have someone who's going to give us an estimate this week, but I mean, in terms of your time, could I, you know, I'd like to table this out of respect again, to respect the dignity of our mobility-challenged residents, that we're not just going to make a pretty path and make them walk that distance, that we are exploring this very short distance where they could park right there.
I've got to ask you to make a motion.
So, right, so I just wanted to check with Ms. Biggs, the time, I would say to table until the next council meeting or to table for two, a month if.
We would need to reach out to Smith Group and find out what their availability is to.
More cost?
Look at alternate options.
So then I guess I would. So then I guess I would, so if I were to table until the next council meeting, I'll certainly have some estimates from an ADA firm, but
Councilmember Kelly moves to table this item to the July 22 city council meeting, is there a second? Councilmember Sufferton, seconds. At long last, I believe I've learned, this is not a debatable motion, would the clerk please take the role on the motion to table?
Councilmember Herakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, there's a tie, which falls on me to break, I break by voting no, the motion fails and the item is not tabled. Councilmember Sufferton.
John Kennedy can have my time, but I think he did it. I just want to be smart about spending money and solving this problem.
Councilmember Herakaris?
So, I took a trip down there today to take a look at the layout and everything. Like, I have an engineering background, but I'm not going to make any, any claims that I know what's going on with soil erosion and the lake, and that's why we have Smith Group. There, while this, this proposal we have that to shorten the distance seems like it would be great, we should have had someone bidding on this when we had the RFP open. When did we have RFP and open bidding for this?
So, the request for proposal for the design work, actually, we did a change order to Smith Group's contract. So we had a contract that we went through a request for qualifications process to hire a consultant to look at the entire lakefront. We were having degradation happen from high lake levels in multiple parks, and so they're looking at all the public property. When this came, that we were opening the Dog Beach, and at the time, the council directed us to expeditiously move to get a design for the Dog, for the ADA access, we turned to Smith Group and asked for a change order for them to do the work because they're a coastal engineer, there's permitting involved when you do any construction on the lakefront, and so they already have those qualifications. So there wasn't, for this specific task, there was not open bidding.
Okay. So, we are working within the confines of like, the way we do this. I don't, yes, from what I see, this might be over-engineered, but this is based on what specifications we gave y'all to find, and like, you know, we run into this a lot where the cost is more than what we thought, but we have a pretty challenging situation here. I don't even know, we haven't even talked about the logistics of the boat landing, like, and the turnaround there. I mean, I think, at this point, we have two days for this, like, they don't have to honor that quote. I'm ready to go forward and with the information we have, so I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Burns, I'll give you one additional minute.
When you say it's expiring in two days, what does that mean?
So we hold, we ask our contractors that bid to hold the bids for 60 days, so regardless of what happens in the world in that 60-day period, we have 60 days to award the bid, and then they have to honor that contract price for that scope of work. After 60 days, it sort of depends on what they want to do. We have had this situation happen in other cases, often when we're involving outside funding, and so we need approvals from another agency as well as from our own, and when that happens, they can choose to say, okay, we'll do the project, but there was a $200,000 cost difference between them and the next lowest bidder, so they could say, we'll do it, but we want $50,000 more, they could say, we're not going to do it, we're busy now, we don't have the capacity to do the work, they could say, yeah, we'll do it.
But is it an arbitrary increase, or is it based on how, does it reflect how real costs have changed in the marketplace?
After 60 days, it's an arbitrary increase, we have no authority to make them honor that.
The parking spaces directly in front of the Dog Beach that were highlighted in the alternative proposal that was just shown, who's parking there now?
So, that area is for parking for the boat launch, so people who want to have a pass to the boat launch have the ability to use that. The challenge is that that cul-de-sac area is kind of a turnaround area for boats on trailers, and so there are striped spaces right there that are intended to park trailers. It is likely that we could address putting, parking there, but if it's ADA parking, there are requirements associated with that that have to do with sidewalk and other things. So I, just without looking at it and standing here in front of you, I don't have that information. Likely it can be, something can be done, it's probably not free. It would also change our operations, because right now, the only people who get past that gate are boat launch people.
But where is the boat launch in relationship to this entrance?
That is the north end of a parking lot, the boat launch is at the south end of that parking lot.
So it would make more sense for them to park all the way at the end anyway, right?
I don't think it's a capacity issue, although I would certainly want to reach out to Parks and Rec and determine that. I think it's a geometric issue, and I think it's possible, I just don't know that it's free.
Yeah.
Just to interject, because there's Parks and Rec directly behind you.
And while you're up there, I'm also trying to picture how people are using the turnaround, and if they're using it, it just seems like an odd place for a cul-de-sac. I could see if it was further south, but I don't understand why it's, how it's being used. I would think people are just backing their boats into the spaces and then able to pull directly out with their vehicles. So I'm also, if you can help me understand whether or not this cul-de-sac in its current position is being used.
Sure. Michael Callahan, deputy director, Parks and Rec. So that cul-de-sac is a remnant of when the Church Street boat ramp, the entrance to it actually was Church Street, which went just north of the lagoon, the Arlington Lagoon building that's currently standing. When the Clark Street Beach House was built, then we made that entrance going in there. And, so the cul-de-sac is a remnant from that, but it's utilized now because the only access for boaters is to come through that gate, go down and unload their boats, and then bring their trailers down, use that cul-de-sac to turn around, and then, and then park, come down into parking spaces and park. So there are some parallel parking that runs along Lake Michigan, and when those are all filled, then people have to use the angled parking that's, that's on the other side. So that's how the cul-de-sac is used. So the cul-de-sac
If the cul-de-sac is in the front, why do they need that to park? Why are they going all the way back down just to park? I'm not understanding.
So they use the cul-de-sac to turn around because they have to park facing, the angled parking actually slants southward. So if they're parking on the west side of the parking lot, they have to pull in in a way that they can back the trailer in.
Okay. And then, and this is a question for Laura, I'm sure I have seconds left, is there, is there a possibility that if the ramp starts further west, like if we, if we change where it starts, that we won't run into the concerns of our waves? And it may require shifting the driveway entrance, potentially, but is it, is it something that we could explore?
It depends on, I mean, there's
And just to, just in the, for the benefit of traffic, that is the end of your additional minute.
So, if the orientation of the ramp is perpendicular to the rock wall, so goes straight towards the lake, waves become a serious issue and concern. There are times now when we have high wave events when the Dog Beach still virtually disappears. So, you get the least trauma from waves if you're parallel and along the rock reventment, but anything that's in that area is subject to waves. That's why there was a point at which the Dog Beach disappeared. It just depends on the lake level, but like, we had a high wave event a week ago, so.
I moved to table this.
To when?
Councilmember Kelly, what do you think?
To table?
Well, she, she just moved to table it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Hold on, just hold on, there's a parliamentary question happening off mic, which is a good question. Ms. Rocky, is that a renewable motion? Can that motion be made after having been voted down? And just in the interest of parliamentary transparency, if, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't see anything in the rules preventing it from being a renewable.
Because I just wanted, I had questions, I wasn't ready at that time, so it has to be.
Councilmember Burns votes to table this until the July 22 meeting, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Would the clerk please take the role on the motion to table to July 22?
Councilmember Herakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the item is tabled to July 22.
Let's tag this one up.
Yes. On item A7, councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
I do. I'd like to motion, item A7, approval of contract award with Joel Kennedy Construction Corporation for Water Service Installation to 2527 Oakton Street.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of change order number one to the agreement with Joel Kennedy Construction Corp. Councilmember Nusma, seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing, councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, I pulled this off. I had requested on the APW agenda that we have a discussion and understanding of what happened when the fiber optic cable was severed, that didn't make it onto the agenda, so I just, I believe, can someone just clarify, was that the Joel Kennedy Construction Firm involved in severing, with the severing of that cable?
No, that was not Joel Kennedy.
Okay, who?
That was Johnson, J.A. Johnson, who is doing the street reconstruction of Leon Place.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, who was it?
J.A. Johnson.
J.A. Johnson, okay, it was not related to the water main?
No.
Okay, okay. I still would like an update, I don't know why that didn't get on there, because I believe, you know, I'm not sure, but I'd like to know what the impacts were, and again, that's unrelated to this, so I'll, I'll stop there, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the change order is approved. On item A8, councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move item A8, approval of contract award with Joel Kennedy Construction Corporation for Water Installation at 2527 Oakton Street.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the contract award with Joel Kennedy Constructing Corp. Councilmember Harris, seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Sorry, man. Me too.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Oh, councilmember Reed?
Yes, aye.
I think, with eight voting in favor and none voting against, some voting several times, the motion carries and the contract award is approved. Now on item A11, councilmember Kelly?
Moving item A11, Resolution 43-R-24, approving the release of closed session minutes.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of Resolution 43-R-24. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
I just had a question, do we, did we approve these in open session also? The closed session minutes, I mean, I just
This is open session, councilmember.
We're approving the release of them, but approving the actual minutes. So, we also, we did approve those in open session also.
That is this.
The release of them is the same as approving the minutes, okay. All right, that's all I wanted to, and do we release also then audio when we release the minutes?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay, could that be, I mean, could I, why couldn't we?
That's, we're not required to.
Right, but I mean, we could, if
No, point of information.
Councilwoman Reed?
The open meetings, I think, and I'm a big Ome fan and like what it provides us, but I think it specifically restricts local government from releasing their closed session minutes, or the closed session recording, and the recording can only be released, to my recollection, to the PAC office, and I think to a court, but I don't think we are allowed to release the verbatim recording.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 43-R-24 is passed. Now on item A12, councilmember Kelly?
Resolution, I'd like to move, Resolution 44-R-24, Resolution of Support of the CDBG-CV Urban Shelter Program Grant Application to the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Education.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves adoption of Resolution 44-R-24. Councilmember Herakaris, seconds. As I recall, the, we did not, councilmembers did not ask questions of Director Flax or other, others on this topic, because this was coming, so now is kind of the chance for that conversation to take place. Director Flax, do you have an additional presentation, or are you just awaiting questions? All right, are there any questions? Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, I'm just going to read through the list from Ms. Payden, with some additional commentary. She asked, where is the money coming from? I think Director Flax answered that, and I'd just like to underscore, this is federal money coming to us through the state of Illinois administered by the DCEO, right? So this is not Evanston taxpayer money. Correct. How was the grant promoted? Like, who was aware of this grant? Was one of the questions.
I can give you more information on that. The NOFA was released February 20 of 2024, and pretty much the organizations that hear about it are the organizations that are involved with the continuum of cares in their area. And you, a municipality has to apply, the organization who actually do run the shelter or rehab the shelter or whatever, do not have to, can't, aren't necessarily going to be the applicant. So, we are in a situation where the city reached out to all of the organizations in the area that have done any kind of shelter running, you know, connections, Interfaith Action, I think was contacted, and so we have a limited number of organizations in our community that do this kind of work. The other date is, any of the other dates that we were asked about was, the public notice was seven days before this meeting, which was per their requirement, I'm just giving all the deadlines.
Answers that question. There was a question, maybe this is for somebody from Connections about the $2 million that Congresswoman Shukowsky has earmarked for this project.
Well, I'm just going to say, that's part of the budget that's actually in the application. If there are questions about the budget and any of that, I'll get somebody from Connections or IFF up here.
If there are questions about the budget and any of that, I'll get somebody from Connections or IFF up here to explain that.
Okay, and then the last question that I had recorded was, I'm paraphrasing as, what's the plan? And so I'll just reiterate, my understanding is to reopen Hilda's Place as an emergency overnight shelter. And reviewing the history, prior to COVID, it had been serving that purpose. Serving 30 or so individuals a night on a lineup, uh, first come, first serve?
Not really. It's not, it's not a lineup first come, first serve. What has most of the time been, how it's operated, has, there have been people who have their space and they are able to, um, return.
Okay, so you can, you have a reservation?
Correct.
Right, but there was a longer waiting list than the number of, uh, than the number of beds that were available. And during COVID, this operation was required to be shut down by social distancing.
Correct.
Rules coming down from Washington. During that time, the need for that service was met by the congregations that are active in the Interfaith Action Network. There are, I don't know, 14, 15 congregations in that network, of which nine or 10 were actively using their gyms, their church gym or the synagogue meeting space. Starting with, uh, St. Luke's Church, when it first opened, was just if temperatures were zero degrees Fahrenheit or below.
It's gone through, um, a range of iterations of temperatures.
Since then, it, it has expanded, and now there are, I believe, nine congregations involved, and they are able, or have been able for the last few years to provide that service, still only limited to the colder months, like mid-October to mid-May. The intention here, to get back to the question, what's the plan? Is, uh, to recall those individuals from the cycle of churches and the synagogue and put them all back in one place at, uh, Hilda's Place and have that be open year-round.
Correct. It'll be a year-round shelter. Um, the Interfaith Action will be very involved with the running of that shelter, that they're a partner in that.
Um, so we have partner with Connections, partner with Interfaith Action. And, you know, we are serving a need that exists in this community, whether we like it or not, uh, and continuing to do so in a way that we have done for years.
Yes.
And doing so by approving this grant with federal money, like, that's an awesome solution. I wish we had this opportunity pop up for everything else that came to council that costs money. Let's use somebody else's money to solve a problem that exists here, that we could reasonably be asked to put some Evanston resources to solve this problem, uh, but we don't have to because there's federal money available. So it's, to me, this is a no-brainer to approve this grant application. Thanks.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Burns. Um, hi, Sarah. Uh, nice to see you. There's two sentences in your memo that I want to, um, get further clarification from. It says, "Connections for the homeless has not requested any additional local funds for this project. And if the grant application is approved, the project would be completed without City of Evanston funding." Where does that fall in the continuum of like a legally binding agreement and our hope?
Um, well, we simply, they're not going to ask us for any money, um, and if they do, which they won't, we could say no.
I mean, this'll, this'll be completed with the combination of the federal and DCEO money. You don't, you're not anticipating a City of Evanston cost.
Federal money coming through DCEO and it'll be the federal money coming through.
I mean, this is our, we're just being a pastor here. We're not funding anything.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns, followed by Revelle.
To provide shelter beds for community members in church facilities or any facility of that nature, does that have to, does that need any approval from the city? Can they just do that or when they, you know what I mean?
When, when churches or faith-based organizations are doing the kind of ones where they're just using.
In the basement or wherever they are in their church, does it require any authorization or approval from the city? Are they able to just, to do it?
It's looked at as, as a, um, accessory use and they are able to do that.
Okay. And so I think the only thing that I'll note, and, and not to, this isn't a reflection of how comfortable I am with it, but, so my understanding is before COVID, when Hilda's Place was operating, there was 18 beds at Hilda's Place, correct?
Most recently, but there have been more in the past. It's gone up and down.
So more recently, 18, and then there was roughly about 40 during the same, 40 through Interfaith Action during the winter months.
Before COVID, there was.
Before COVID. Yeah, so 38 before COVID.
Just, for, just if we could have, if just.
Yeah.
Into the microphone, both introduce yourself and say what you said off mic.
My name is Sean Isles. I, I work for Interfaith Action. I'm the overnight shelter director. So before COVID, there was 38 people in our shelter. That number went down to 20 during, uh, during COVID. It was something that we, we talked to the health department about. It was, uh, Ike said that number. Uh, that number has since been raised to 30. So, that's where we're at now.
Thank you. And so before COVID, you know, let's say 56 beds if you include both, and this would, you would think represent then a reduction of beds to 30, but it would be year-round. And so I think that's something that's already been stated, so we're aware of that. But it's possible, I, I think whether or not Interfaith, so the first thing I heard about Interfaith is that they're no longer, they're, they're going to, moving forward, they'll support this central location at Hilda's Place, and they won't continue to provide beds in the various houses of faith.
Correct.
But that, in talking to Sean, it sounds like that's still up for consideration, which could mean that we approve this, there's 30 beds, and then the number of beds could, there, there could be additional beds provided through Interfaith Action at some point, even exceeding the 58 before COVID. And we don't have any way to control that because it's considered an accessory use and something they can do. Again, I'm probably comfortable with that, but I think that's the only really issue to consider. That and the fact that we're going from year-round to, you know, the Interfaith Action provided the beds during the winter months more recently, and I think less than that at some point previously. But I think the year-round element to this and then not having any controls for how many beds that this could get up to if Interfaith Action decides to continue their program is, is really the, the only thing that could be of concern. Again, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but I just, I think it's appropriate to make both of those things clear. Uh, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Harris.
So I'm a little bit concerned about where we ended with Councilmember Burns. I mean, um, as I understood, Interfaith Action, the, the intention is not at all to resume, uh, providing shelter.
Yes. What, what we're working on is, is, uh, is in agreement with Connections, where we would, we would run the, the 30 beds in that space.
At Hilda's Place, right, yeah.
There is no plan to continue to, to have it move between the nine different faith communities that it runs.
Right, yeah. Right, no, it was an amazing, um, volunteer effort to provide, um, the shelter during, during COVID. So, um, we, we really appreciate that and, and this sounds like a really good new, new, new chapter.
Yeah, the benefit would be that it would be year-round.
Right.
We wouldn't have to, like, our current season that just finished was from October 22nd to May 25th.
Right.
And then on May 25th, those 30 people that we were housing.
Right. Were on their own, right.
Which is a very difficult conversation to have with those people.
Sure, yeah. And, and I read in the memo that even after you were taking, you know, sheltering that however many people in, in the churches, there were still like 40 or 50 people on a waiting list. I mean, so you were all already stretched.
So, once, once COVID started, we began a system where we assigned those cots every night to a specific individual, and that individual kept that spot, uh, unless they missed two nights without a valid reason, or, you know, they broke the rules for some reason. And so that was a system that, that worked well, uh, for the churches. When it was first come, first serve, uh, it's a little harsh, you know? If you're, if we were serving 38 people before COVID and you're the 39th person, then what are you supposed to do? You have no plan and it's 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
So it was harsh. It was also, people were lining up outside the churches for two or three hours. It got a little raucous sometimes with the, with the spots assigned, and it's much better for the churches and the community. There's less, um, it's less disruptive.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree.
Yes, it's, it's just more humane to do.
Sure, right, yeah. So, um, Hilda's Place has been, um, providing this shelter for, I mean, since, what? Um, 1984 or something, I think it ran.
In the mid-'80s, yes.
So it's been in, in place there for a really long time. Um, there're going to be more beds now, 30 beds rather than 18 from before COVID. Um, but one addition is, you were, um, you're going to be able to have families and women, whereas before it was men-only or something. Is that correct?
I, I don't think that's been determined yet. We're still, you know, we're still, we, we meet weekly to talk about how it's going to look and, and how we would work together and, and what that would look like.
Mm-hmm, right.
That's, uh, good evening, everyone. Betty Vog, CEO, Connections for the Homeless. Um, as Sean mentioned, we're meeting with Interfaith to determine the real shape of the partnership. At this point, because the grant itself is for construction, it has to be expended by the end of 2026, we kind of need to make some calls.
Right.
About the design itself, and what our hope is, is that we're able to do that because it's a large enough space to, uh, be flexible in the way we end up, um, implementing.
Right, yeah, right, yeah. Well, that would be a desirable outcome if, if that works out. Do I have anything else to say? Um, well, it does, it really seems to me there, I mean, there is really tremendous need in the community and, um, to have this opportunity to acquire this extra additional federal funding to be able to, um, make Hilda's Place a year-round shelter, I think, is a really, um, great, great thing for Evanston.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Um, I'm suffering from a migraine, so my face will say more than my words will. So, following along, following along with, um, Councilmember Sufferton, just want to ask a question. If you don't get the $2 million that you're asking for, then what happens?
That would be very difficult. The, the project that we've scoped is for $4 million, and that is with a lot of attention to cost. I know it's a lot of money. No one wishes construction was less expensive than I do. We've worked really hard with our architects and our space planners at IFF, and they can talk more about it to ensure that we could keep within that $4 million budget. But it would put a very long hold on our ability to execute.
Okay, but you have a contingency because we're not at, the city is not, we've said, you said you're not going to ask us, and I'm going to hold Director Flax and you to that. Is that what I heard?
We come back and ask the city to provide that $2 million?
Whatever's short.
If the city now was to say no to the other.
No, if you ask for the $2 million and they give you one.
Oh, I see.
Then you've already told customers.
I assume you would say no if we made that request.
Okay, so you have a contingency. That's what I'm saying. Or do you then not accept the $1 million and not do the project?
We have not crossed that bridge yet. Our anticipation is that the full amount will be awarded to most applicants. It's a interesting process, and Jessica, I don't know if you want to come up and talk about the, the process is very narrow for who can apply for this. And so we don't anticipate that the, that the amount of awards would be less than the maximum at this point.
Okay.
That's as much information as we have.
Okay.
Did I get that right?
Yeah. Hey, uh, Jessica Nepomayachi, I'm with IFF. We've been working with the city and Connections and the team on this project. So, the funding for this is a points-based system, um, and, uh, there's about $15 million. The max request was $2 million, and the projects had to score around 50 points or above out of 75 to look competitive, and this met that threshold.
I get that, but I'm, I just want to be clear. You said you're not going to ask the city for taxpayer money. So if, as we've just learned with the dog park, we started with $600,000, got to $800,000, so those things happen. I just, I'm just trying to understand and hoping that you come up with a contingency plan. You haven't, so I'll move to the next question. Is there a matrix for success? How, how do we know this is it? The, the 30 beds, we feel like we can fill them with Evanston residents?
The model that we're proposing in partnership with Interfaith Action is to move the existing operation to a different single base location. So, we would anticipate that there would be, um, sort of a parallel, um, demographic to the folks that we see at the Margarita. Right now, as Sean said, they have a 50-person waitlist generally. The number of people that we have in the Margarita, about 89% of those are Evanston residents. So we would anticipate that there would be the similar.
You say 89, um, and again, I apologize, my head is banging. You say 89% are Evanston residents? And what is the criteria for being an Evanston resident?
You grew up here, you went to school here, you have family here, you owned a home here, you worked here.
So, I could be in Chi, uh, born and raised here, so I'm not that. But my cousin who lives in Chicago could be considered Evanston resident because we're from her, I'm here.
That is, the question is, we have, do you have an Evanston connection? And that is what, that I was answering. And of course, people have varying degrees of connection to Evanston. So you may have lived here for a year, you may have lived here for 50 years, you may have, um, gone to high school.
Then, I think I believe, what I heard is there's a 60 or 90-day residency requirement. Is that correct? Is that what you all work off of? I'm just trying to get some understanding.
I'm, I'm not aware of a specific, like, when you're homeless, you don't have a residence. And so, we, we have such a long waitlist at the Margarita that we never know somebody, I mean, that's not, it's not 100% true. We rarely know somebody for less than 90 days before they would be admitted to the Margarita. But we don't have a, it's, it's not possible, I don't think, to have a residency requirement if someone is homeless.
Okay, well, again, I just were, I am concerned about, I'm concerned about the world, but I'm very concerned about Evanston residents, and I know, um, residents that are, find themselves homeless, that find themselves with children, and I just, I, I want to challenge, but because of how I'm feeling, I won't go into it, but I'll put it on the record. I'd like to challenge that number of 89% are residents and what that criteria is. So, um, I think I've asked my questions for now. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns for a second time with two minutes left.
Um, the, uh, well, first I want to touch on what I said before, because I don't want to, I don't want people to feel like it was an I got you moment. My understanding from talking to Sean, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that although y'all are leaning towards no longer providing those beds in, in that way, that it hasn't, it's not a done deal yet. And if that's, if, if, if you want to express something different, that's fine. I think either way, though, as leadership changes, that could change potentially. Would you agree with that?
We have no intention to run the current system if we were able to have one location at Hilda's Place.
And the only reason, yeah, only reason I'm trying to emphasize this, because I don't, I'm comfortable with it. I just, the one concern that we always hear, and not, I don't think I've received it from any 5th Ward residents, but people outside. any 5th Ward residents, but people outside of, of the 5th Ward presumably are just, what, when is enough enough? Right? When is, when is Evanston kind of reached its capacity to serve not only the homeless population in, in Evanston, but that other percentage that we talked about that where it's people coming from outside, that don't have a connection that Betty described a moment ago? And, and what I'm saying is if this, if the priorities change, it could get up to 30 beds again through Interfaith Action, which puts us right about where the amount of beds for shelters were before COVID. The only difference is it's year-round, and maybe you could exceed them out if, if other houses of worship or other, other facilities become available. I just want people to understand what could happen in the future, so we don't say down the road whether I'm here or not, like, oh, we didn't know that. No, this, this is reality. This could potentially happen in a round of possibility. And so I just wanted to get that out there. I think the second thing I, I want to understand, it might be in the packet, so I apologize, but I don't have a clear sense of, is, is, so there was some other funding that we, that we used for the Margarita Inn where the, the, it, it was very narrow in who could use it or what it could be used for? Is this similarly narrow? Or what, what are other expenditures in other possible ways that we could use this funding? Or is this, is this really?
It is very narrowly focused on this. I mean, it literally is called, you know, the Shelter Grant Program.
Okay, so it's just as narrow as, yeah, I think the other one talked about transitional housing maybe or something else.
In fact, you have to be in an urban location even. It's not throughout, it's not completely throughout the state.
The other grant, what did it talk about again? It wasn't, it might have not been transitional housing, but the funding we used to support the Margarita Inn, I thought there was some funding.
ARP money?
Yes.
That was for non-congregate.
There it is, non-congregates. So that same way, it's just as narrow? Okay.
Exactly.
All right, perfect. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, thank you. So I think it's clear we all, you know, very much want to do what we can to support this vulnerable population. Just to sort of follow up a little bit on Councilmember Burns' questions. I do think it's important that we collaborate with our surrounding, you know, communities, Skokie and Willmette, to be really most effective. How many shelters are there in Skokie and in Willmette? How many homeless shelters?
There's no shelter in Willmette.
Could you please approach the microphone?
I apologize. There's no shelter in Willmette. Skokie has a daytime respite center similar to our drop-in center. They are considering an overnight shelter there as well.
So no, no overnight shelters in either of our neighboring suburbs?
Not in the immediate neighbors.
And, I mean, I do hope we'll start those conversations. I think we need to look at this as a region to really best, to best address the issues so that we're not, I think concentrating is not necessarily the most, the best approach to concentrate all of the shelters in a region in a city. I think collaborating in a region with other cities, I think we can also, you know, talk about best practices and share ideas. So that concerns me a little bit. So.
I appreciate that, and it's why we're part of a number of collaboratives of both shelter providers and shelter and housing providers in suburban Cook County. We're part of the Alliance 10 Homelessness, sorry, the Alliance 10 Homelessness in suburban Cook County, where there are six shelter providers that are doing fix site, non-congregate shelter, and other shelter providers who are doing congregate, church-based, faith-based shelters. So we absolutely buy in 100% to that sort of peer learning model. We have guidelines provided by those bodies that help us make sure we're doing the best practices that we can in the delivery of shelter services.
Great, yeah. I mean, I would, I would feel much more comfortable if I knew we were working as a city, our council with, with Willmette and Skokie, and discussing ways that we can all, you know, share in our homeless shelters in terms of, again, being able to, I think, best address with resources, I think, if it's among the region as opposed to all in Evanston. I think we, I think we can raise the level. I think we, I think metrics is a really important point that Councilmember Harris brought up. I'm still not really clear on, on what metrics we're using in our success rate in terms of, but, but anyway, I just want to bring up those concerns and questions. I would like to see us doing, working more regionally to see if we could, you know, is there any reason? I'm just wondering, did any other city apply for this? Our surrounding suburbs, our immediate surrounding suburbs, Skokie and Willmette, are they planning on developing?
Not to our knowledge. You, it's difficult to apply for a capital grant when you have not any infrastructure or any organizations that are doing that at the moment. Oak Park has applied or is applying.
But I think Connections works with Skokie, though, right? I mean, you have contracts with Skokie.
We provide eviction prevention services with a very small tranche of funding from Skokie. We don't provide shelter services. We do collaborate with them about their, like, they'll ask us to come and talk to a resident about housing or something in, in their drop-in. But they, it, it is an expensive proposition to run a shelter. And the, also, the narrowness of this funding application applies only to municipalities that are already CDBG recipients. So that further narrows the possibilities of who can actually start shelter. We'd be happy to help Skokie start a shelter.
Thank you very much.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 44-R-24 is adopted. Now on item A13, Councilmember Kelly.
I'd like to move item A13, resolution appointing a director and alternate directors to the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves adoption of Resolution 36-R-24. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I pulled this off. I just was concerned about, well, I wanted to understand a little bit more about this, SWANK, I think it's called, and wondering if this is, now that we have new, I'm concerned about our public works being spread thin, and I'm wondering if this isn't a role that perhaps our new assistant deputy, our deputy city manager couldn't do, rather than, I just, I'm, I am concerned about our public works.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Brian Zeroman, Solid Waste Coordinator with the City of Evanston. That would be an eligible alternate to propose. It really comes down to want of the voting body or the city manager to allocate staff. The ordinance that this resolution kind of works in tandem with is amending the bylaws for SWANK to allow for senior director-level staff to act as a alternate for members to vote on at SWANK measures. So a lot of the municipalities of the, we're one of 23, have expressed interest in that to allow more participation and availability of people at SWANK board meetings, which has had noted challenges throughout COVID and beyond to have active participation. So this was proposed by numerous members. Current alternatives, current alternates that are allowed are just the city manager and then members of city council and the elected board member. So.
Point information, I just, I know that this is something that is, needs to be adopted simultaneously by all of the different participating municipalities. Is it precisely in this form? Or can you just speak to the connection between that need and the previous question?
So the, the ordinance has to be approved by every member in order to allow SWANK to have a vote on alternate, changing its bylaws to allow for that alternate. If none of the, if one member does not approve this, then no one can do that. They plan on having a vote at an upcoming board meeting around September, so they're really encouraging all member municipalities to get this ordinance passed. The resolution is something that we need to do periodically, usually every two years to appoint, to just say who our appointed member is on the board. So usually that's the mayor or the city manager lists as an alternate. The resolution in, that is now a list of public works director, only because if that pass or that vote goes through, we already have that adopted, and we don't have to go through the, the process of setting an alternate. We already had to do the resolution because we don't have anything on the books currently. The previous term had expired.
So it would automatically be the public works director with an alternate? I mean, that's my concern, I guess.
No, no, no. It would still be the mayor. The mayor would be the primary person. The alternates would then be just the city manager and the public works director that could be alternates.
Or adding the public works director.
Correct.
I mean, I'm just wondering why we really feel we need or want to do that.
It's just simply a safety measure, or not a safety measure, but just more of a, an added level of.
I just don't want to add more work. I mean, I feel like right now our director's spread pretty thin with the workload and issues that we have. So I'm just, that's my concern.
I will, that discretion's up to Edgar, Director Cano, to decide if he wants to participate or not. No one's forcing him if he, he wanted to. He also, when discussing this, did not state otherwise, so.
Okay, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not in the room. Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 36-R-24 is adopted. Now on item A14, Councilmember Kelly.
I'd like to move item, item A14, ordinance 51-0-24, an ordinance approving amendments to the agreement establishing the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County as municipal joint action agency to the bylaws of the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves adoption of ordinance, sorry, introduction of ordinance 51-0-24. Councilmember Harakaris, I believe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 51-0-24 is introduced and will appear back on the July 22 Council Agenda for Action. Now, the next four items, A15 through 18, are kind of, they travel, they may, if you all so desire, travel together. They're liquor licenses where the request from the various council members representing the, the applicants in question is to suspend the rules so introduction and action can take place tonight. So I would, if folks want, I'd like to take a motion.
The rule, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll move suspension of the rules on all of those items, and I will, we'll start with that.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules so that ordinances 63-0-24, 64-0-24, 65-0-24, and 66-0-24 may all be introduced and acted upon this evening. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion to suspend this particular rule, the motion to suspend this rule receives the required unanimous support, and the rule is suspended, allowing each of these items to be introduced and acted upon tonight. Councilmember Kelly, do you want to make that motion?
I'm sorry, the motion to.
To, for final passage of those four ordinances.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves final passage of ordinance 63, 64, 65, and 66-0-24. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed. Sorry, is your hand up from before, Councilmember, or from now?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna raise it.
Okay. In that case, it was, the motion was made on those four items by Councilmember Kelly and seconded by Councilmember Reed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 63, 64, 65, and 66-0-24 are all adopted. Now on item HCDC1, Councilmember Revel.
I move ordinance 52-0-24, amending the city's residential landlord/tenant ordinance. This is our introduction.
Councilmember Revel moves introduction of ordinance 52-0-24. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Revel.
Well, just very briefly, this ordinance before us tonight is the culmination of many, many hours of meetings at the Housing and Community Development Committee. As we heard from representatives from the Moran Center, it, it really would help tenants in Evanston have the same kinds of protections that tenants in other parts of Cook County have. It's, we've really, the committee did, worked really hard to balance the interests of both landlords, housing providers, and tenants. And we believe that we've come up with a, with an ordinance that, that really advances protections for tenants and also balances the, the interests of our housing providers and our community. So I, I strongly urge, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about, or Sarah would, will as well, about the, some of the changes that we made after our last discussion.
And was there any, any amendment required?
Not from me.
Okay, Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this and the stakeholder engagement. I'm pleased that the feedback we got from landlords today seemed to be, get a kind of positive, that we're headed in the right direction. I would like to propose an amendment that will make it just a little bit easier on some of the smaller landlords who don't have a back office staff to keep them up to speed. I want to make sure that the city continues to offer a model lease agreement and also continues to offer a list of required disclosure documents, so that with one stop shopping, at least on some webpage somewhere, a, a smaller landlord, you know, can avail themselves of these documents and just make their life a lot of it easier. So I just emailed this motion a couple of minutes ago, but I will read it. This is a motion to amend section 5310C to read as follows, and if you're following along, this is on page 323 of the packet. So to read as follows, "A model apartment lease agreement," quote, unquote, "agreement as amended from time to time, and copies of all required disclosure documents shall be on file with the city clerk."
Already exist.
Was there a second?
They already exist. This is, yeah, this is, you know, requiring it by ordinance.
Councilmember Nusma moves to amend ordinance 52-0-24 by adding a requirement that a model lease agreement be on file with the city clerk. Councilmember Revel, seconds. Is there any discussion on, on the amendment? Council, Councilmember Reed?
I think it is perfectly in order. I just want to make sure that our, we're not going to, again, it wouldn't be bad to be duplicative, but there may be a section of code that already requires this, I think, and I'm trying to do a quick search myself, but maybe legal can get to it faster. Under the definition of the city clerk, I think there's a requirement to provide this. Again, may not hurt to see it twice in the code.
Let's go with that and vote on it.
So I didn't, is there a request that we, is, is the motion still?
Motion stands.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to amend ordinance 52-0-24 as just discussed?
Yes, I will take a minute for myself, but it, it, there is a landing space on the city clerk's office that already has those documents. And I know Tina Payton, who's here, is a regular at the clerk's office, and I'm happy to keep her.
And I'm happy to keep providing that, but we'll, we'll vote. Councilmember Hidakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Seferdin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the ordinances amended as previously discussed. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing, oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, just for, I think, for the record, this is really important. Can I have staff walk through some of the changes that were made between now and the last meeting?
Yes, I won't go into the tiny little, just word changes. But the primary things that were changed were, are, in 5-3-5-2, we, there was a section, it was E4, which was, I think, out of place originally and didn't actually refer to, it only referred to one of the prior items in the list. And we made that change, so it referred to, we pulled that below the list of items. That, so it referred to all of them. That was one. But the primary things, that was just something that staff noticed. But the primary things that were changed, that we took the additional fines and fees that were in and reduced them back to where they had been, and they are consistent with Cook County's. And we changed some of the names to make it easier for people to understand. Instead of notice of renewal or refusal to renew rental agreement, we just went with, similar to Cook County, saying it's fair notice regarding renewal.
Can I, just to hone in, I'm really referring to substantive changes. You know, we talked about the period, the renewal period. We talked about fees and fines, so those.
The fees and fines, we went back to where they were. The renewal period, we have a 90-day period for renewal of lease or non-renewal. But instead of the tenant not having to respond until 30 days before the end of the lease term, they have until 45 days. So that was a splitting that time between the two. And there was an area.
If I can interject there, my understanding was that we voted on, there was a motion to make it 120 days.
No, there was not a. No, that was not voted on.
I can't fully see the room, and I'm the only one with a recollection of 120 days being the.
Point of information, Councilmember Reed. It was brought up during public comment from one of the housing providers, and, but it was never put to a vote.
All right. I was almost certain that it was put to a vote, and I could have sworn I made the motion, but. Because we're. All right, I'll leave that there. Please continue. I'm sorry, Ms. Sarah.
One thing that was confusing was in 5-3-6-5. We clarified the language. A talks about the period of time for notice of renewal or non-renewal. And item B then gets a much more thorough explanation of what happens if the housing provider fails to give the notice, that notice, which is simply that the lease term shall be extended, and the tenant may remain in the dwelling unit for 90 days after the date that such written notice is received by the tenant. So it was what you pointed out, that if somebody missed by a day or something like that, it doesn't throw them into any violation that they are going to get fined for or anything of the kind. It just starts the 90-day notice from that period, and there, the tenant gets to remain in the unit for the same rent that they were currently at. Similarly, item C, which is, one was for the not renewal, non-renewal, and the other is if they wish to renew. So C and D in 5-3-6-5 more clearly explain how, what happens if they don't follow A or C. B or D comes in. That was something that there was some confusion about. And then the, as I said, the additional fines or fees that were higher have gone back to what they were and are consistent with Cook County and the city of Evanston. There was a $500 potential fine that people were going to be receiving, and that was removed. We did delete one other thing, and this was actually something that I don't believe has ever been acted on. There is a 5-3-12-3. Fines. Each member of the police department, while on duty, is hereby authorized to arrest any person who is found to have violated any of the provisions of subsection 5312 of this chapter. And that is lockouts. And the police in that situation could arrest people or fine them. But at the recommendation of corporate counsel, we've removed that. It's really not something that's ever happened in the, it's just not how lockouts are handled. And I don't think we want our police department arresting people for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm also trying to go back and check the record on the other item. I will pause my time for now.
Well, this time no one else is seeking to ask a question or comment.
All right, well then, to buy myself one more minute. Sarah, can you talk about the fines and what we set the fines at?
The fines are, gotta find the right ones. There, one was removed completely, and people were just back to getting two months rent, but with no additional fines. I'm trying to scan through here and find these. So in 5352F, the change, the $500 in damages to $200 in damages, which was consistent with Cook County's RLTO. So that is one of them. And there was one other that was just removed. The fine was removed, which I am trying to find right now. So there is no fine attached to it. It's just the months, the rent. This is. And I can't find it right now.
Okay.
I'll keep looking.
Yeah, no, that is helpful. I feel as though one mistake we are making here is I'm not confident 45 days is enough time for someone to find alternative housing. And I'm speaking to my colleagues here. Thank you, Sarah. But, and I, it, you know, not that 60 days was amazing. My understanding of Chicago's ordinance, and this is where, you know, I certainly recall the conversation from the diocese. We may not have taken an official vote on it. I guess the minutes don't reflect that. But 45 days just, I don't think is enough time for the average person, average family, to find a new place and determine whether or not they're going to renew a lease or not. That's why I could have sworn we landed on 120 days, and that would give 60 days for the tenant to find additional housing and 60 days for the housing provider to find another tenant. I want to know what I think Chicago's ordinance, you know, and potentially the county, and please, legal, or Council Ruggie, or Sarah, correct me if I'm, if you know me to be mistaken, but my understanding is that Chicago's a tiered system where after a hun, you know, after three years, someone is entitled to 120 days of notice. One, is that your understanding, Sarah, or any of the advocates who are experts?
Yes, Chicago's is 120 days for people who've lived there for three years or more. But they do not.
And is that, sorry?
They do not have any limit, they don't have a stated time like we are putting in of when the tenant has to respond. That is not handled the same way in Chicago's RLTO.
So essentially, the tenant could respond on the 119th day?
I don't know all the details about the Chicago lease on that. If Kathy Lone is on, she may know that, and I really appreciate letting her speak to that.
Judy, thank you, Director Black. Good evening, City Council. Katherine Penrose-Lone, Assistant City Attorney. Both Cook County and the city of Chicago are more concerned about landlords requiring an answer from a tenant too far out from when the lease renewal would come up. So the question of how much time does a tenant have to decide is not addressed in either Chicago or Cook County. It simply says that the landlord cannot require a tenant to renew a lease more than 90 days prior to expiration in Chicago or 60 days in Cook County. So the tiered system you're talking about, where the amount, where it has time periods in it, is how much notice a landlord or housing provider has to give a tenant of an intention to not renew a lease. And that is tiered based on how long the individual's been in the property. And 120 days is for people who've lived in that property for three years or more. So if they want, if a landlord wants to not renew a lease, and the tenant has been there for that long, they have to give the tenant 120 days' notice of an intent to not renew. So there's no answer that would be coming back from the tenant in that situation because they're being told that it's not going to be renewed.
So I'm sorry to interrupt, but in the case of, let's say, a change to the terms of the lease, what, you know, a rent increase, can't have your pet anymore, whatever the case may be, change in terms, what is the notice requirement there in the county?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any. The requirement is that they cannot require a, I mean, I've been a renter in Chicago for many, many years. Rent goes up all the time. Leases change all the time. The rule is, with respect to timeframes, is that a landlord cannot require you to renew the lease more than 90 days out. There is no, no set time period for how long you have as a tenant once you get that proposed lease renewal to make up your mind. There's nothing in their ordinance that addresses that issue because that's not the primary concern. The concern was with landlords trying to lock down a tenant, you know, six months in advance, saying they want a renewal. And so they're not allowed to require it any more than 90 days in advance. But as far as notice to the tenant about something, that tiered system is only for non-renewals. So there's no answer coming back from a tenant in those situations at all.
Thank you for that clarification. That is helpful. I don't always look to Chicago for wisdom, and I think this is a place where Chicago has fallen short and potentially the county.
Yeah, Cook County is exactly the same. So, I mean, their dates, their time periods are different. They're actually a little bit harsher in Cook County. But, but their, the system is the same.
Thank you very much. So I'm not going to make a motion at this time, but I do think, you know, one, we're taking a good step here. I do have concern about just the 45-day window. I wish that our neighboring jurisdictions and our county had stronger protections in their ordinances for folks in this regard. But I'll just lodge that concern about this. And then I want to note also that, you know, this, this, our updates here do go quite a distance in helping folks in court. I do want to, just as I close, dispel some of the, you know, I would ask my colleagues, Councilman Newsma and others, who aren't on the Housing and Community Development Committee, where we've discussed, for example, the Just Cause, which is, I believe it's going to fit right into our RLTO, our Housing Provider Ordinance here. That there, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation or disinformation around, you know, 30% rent hikes around studies out of NYC that I think are limited. And certainly if folks have questions on that, as we move forward with both this and eventually the Just Cause, I'm certainly happy to address any concerns on studies that I think are, that I know, at least certainly one of them, to be really speculative and not very helpful, and also from 2008, and the study, you know, on these ordinances abroad. So I don't think it's apples to apples here. But we're making a big step here. Happy to support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Just wanted to know where we are with the noticing period. I know we discussed at the last meeting, there was no motions made, but the idea of the landlords having, needing to provide notice 120 days out, and then the land, the. So where are we at? If I can ask my.
I would request order in the chamber so that the council can deliberate properly.
Sarah?
That was discussed or brought up, but it was not voted on. And so we stuck with the 90 days. That seemed to be the. It was not a change that was, we were directed to make. Yes, there was an increase of the time for the tenant to 45, but we didn't change the 90 to 120.
Okay.
I also, there's one thing I forgot to point out, that we also changed the effective date to January 1, 2025. Sorry.
And then Megan McClung from Moran Center, I believe, talked about a pay and accept. Were you here for that? Did you hear her talk about that?
I didn't hear that, but is it the pay-to-stay part that's in there?
Dominic, you are, you can probably explain this better than I can in a moment because I'm kind of bouncing around with a bunch of different stuff in my head. Can you explain her concern? Or what she requested?
Sure. So I spoke with, with Ms. McClung previous to this. So her point was that to make pay to stay. her point was that to make pay to stay something that's operable in Evanston and elsewhere, source of income protections, which are now the law, of course, not just in Evanston, but in the state of Illinois, also have to be operable so that if a tenant has the opportunity to one time, if they have rent arrearsages up to the point of an eviction order being issued, to pay those rent arrearsages and remain in place in the unit, that the landlord house has to accept that. Now, under source of income protections, under civil rights and fair housing law, which is what we do, that's our bread and butter, is that if landlords are rejecting that kind of payment, they're saying, we're not going to work with third parties, that could potentially at that point be a source of income violation. So I don't think what Ms. McClung was offering was any sort of new law or amendment or alteration, but sort of just affirming where that needs to be to function.
So is it aligning kind of our local code with protections that they may have to?
Statewide.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, yeah, source of income is a protected class statewide, so.
Okay. That's all. Those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll on 52-0-24, which has been amended by the model lease addition?
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Bernusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance 52-0-24, as amended, is introduced and will be back for action on the July 22nd City Council Agenda. Now on item ED1, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item ED1, approval of funding for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $82,000.
Is there a second? The motion failed. Councilmember Bernusma, this approval of funding for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Councilmember Hatakakis, second. Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, sure. Hey, Paul?
That's our annual, prove that this is worth $82,000, please.
Good evening. Apologize for that delay. Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the council, I'm Paul Zamazak. I serve as the Economic Development Manager. This evening, Executive Director of the Chicago North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, Janice Beckman, is present and plans to step through some some data, as I understand some of the council members want. I do just want to give a summary from the Economic Development Division perspective. The $82,000 that the CVB asked for leverages roughly $3 million from total, right, between the state and the other 10 communities that are members. So that your contribution, the taxpayer contribution represents something in the range of 3% of the total budget. Again, I'm not going to overly sell this request. I'm just going to give you some some facts from from what I hear from the business community, the hotels. Really value the the data and appreciate the leads, and Gina will explain if she's asked to what her lead kind of percentage rate is, how many she's, how many they've actually landed from the leads they provide to the hotels. One of the other aspects of this, it was explained to the Economic Development Committee, is the the CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, has a ad co-op buy where they buy a series of ads, whether it's on social media, CTA, et cetera. They're able to offer those, they they pay some big percentage of those those ad rates. So the downtown organization, Main Dempster Mile, Central Street, can capitalize on these ads, and otherwise it wouldn't be able to out of their budgets. And then we we have this new data set, both on the hospitality side. We've always had access to the STAR reports, which is, which is the the hotel data, but now we have visitation data that's similar to Placer, but it's strictly focused on visitation. It's it's a new data set, so you're not going to be able to see comparisons until next year when we compare the two years.
Is that mobile device tracking? Or how, we, what is that? How is that?
Gina, Gina will explain the the data, the actual, it it tracks, it tracks cellphone data. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's anonymized cellphone data. And then finally, we're going to have these data sets moving forward, but then finally, the the CVB is broadcasting through its, you know, social media, through its magazine buys, et cetera, the the some people still like the paper that they find in the hotel lobby, so there's information like that planted throughout the region. So it, they they help us expand our scope of of marketing Evanston more than we can do. We can only do it locally. So they take all the events that we're already planning to do, and they broadcast those to the region, so to speak. So I'll stop there. That's, you know, that's kind of, I I kind of say the same thing every year.
So like if I, if I'm staying at the Ramada on Walk Egan in Morton Grove, in the lobby, there'll be a circular, okay.
Should we invite Gina?
Or, yeah.
It's probably a little more productive.
Yeah, or just, yeah, help me understand, like.
And I'll, I'll be here too. Thanks.
Okay, um, next, first of all, thank you. I know you've been here for a while, so I don't want to elongate your night.
While you're not elongating our night, could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
What?
While you're not elongating our night, could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, sorry. Janice Beckman, Executive Director of Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you for having me here. I gave a packet of all we do, and I know that you have a lot of information, but I, last year I was asked specifically for metrics. So I have given a lot of metrics and I'd be happy to go through them. You know, as Paul said, the beginning of the part of, for the hotel and group business, we use the STAR report. This is a international report given, and we see what our occupancy is, our average daily rate, and then the revenue per available room, which ultimately tells a community how much taxes they're going to collect. And at the Economic Development Committee, I was asked, like, what are the latest, like, trends? And then I added to this packet, the third page of data that showed that we, our occupancy is still not return, yeah, this page, the occupancy has still not returned to pre-COVID levels. If you look at the very right column, we're still 88% of what we were in 2019, but we're really driving rate. So we're at 116% higher in the rate. So overall, we're receiving more revenue, but we need to get occupancy back, but that's up to the hotels to drive. They, hotels rather have a higher rate and lower occupancy, so we're kind of mimicking what's happening right now in the city of Chicago. Other data that we collect is the leads that we send to hotels. So we go to trade shows, we do direct sales calls, we bring, we pay and bring meeting planners here, and then we, our salespeople get the information of an RFP, and we issue leads to the hotels, and that is on page 19 of 132 of your packet. And so the hotels get the leads for the business. We have booked out of 472 leads sent to the Evanston Hotels in the last 12 months. We have booked in Evanston, it's here somewhere, 42 of them, no, 58 of them, sorry.
Sorry, Gina, can you help me understand that? When you say we, like, is it up to the hotels to close that deal, or is it?
Yes, we cannot, it's collusion. We cannot get involved in the rates and the offering. And a lot of times, the hotel really wants the business, but they have something else at the same time, but they appreciate the connection and introduction to that meeting planner, and so to them, that's valuable, even if they can't book that lead.
Okay, so your, your, like, work is represented in the 472?
Yes.
And the hotels closed 58 of those?
The Evanston Hotels in the last year closed 58 of those, yes.
Got it.
So then we have a calculation of the economic impact that comes from destinations international, our governing body that takes into account the size of the cities, the size of our hotels, the rates, and then they know the average spend that people spend when they're coming to a meeting for two or three days. That's how we come up with our economic impact number. And then we also work with the two main third-party bookers, which is Seavent and Helms Briscoe. A lot of corporations and associations don't plan their meetings directly anymore. They work with these three parties. We have partnerships with Seavent and Helms Briscoe, so those are additional leads that we're facilitating and sending to the hotels. And then really quickly, something that is to note is that we offer an incentive program, and that's with the Cook County money that we've received. So if a hotel is about to book a piece of business and they've given all the incentives they have on their end, but they might lose it to a hotel in DuPage or Rosemont, we kick in incentives, and then that helps them kick, you know, close the deal. So last year, we spent $35,600 in just incentives for meetings that came to Evanston. We also do group tours where we bring motor coach business here to go to the attractions. So you can see the numbers for them. Those, most of those are day trips. They're not overnight, and you can see the economic impact for those, and those really help the merchant districts, the museums, the theaters, and things like that, when we bring group tours. And then other, and another thing, one of the things that we cannot really calculate is the individual visitor that just goes to our website, calls a hotel, and books it. So most, all of our advertising points are our website. They go to our hotel page, which is the second most visited page on our website, and they directly go and book a hotel. There's no way that we can capture this. The only thing that we can capture is if we do a specific advertising campaign, and we can see how many people went and booked through that. And that's through a third party like Adara and Arrivalist, and we do do contracts with that, but that does not mean that someone else hasn't found us on the website through our advertising and gone and booked on their own. And I'm talking about the individual leisure visitor. And last but not least, we received a special grant this year from the Department of Human Services in the state, and we use that to fund internships, and we had 18 paid internships in the last year in Evanston paying over $80,920 in in internship fees. When I get to the leisure marketing, which is the next page, oh, you're there already. Okay. So here are all our stats that I, you know, in terms of our website, our web impressions per month, number of pages with Evanston content in our site is 18,210 pages, which is a lot. I say the top three are events, hotels, seasonal page, and dining. We do, we advertise all our posts that we do on Facebook and Instagram. We spend eight, $68,000 a month, and the average clicks to website from Google searches is 15,900 a month. And you can see our Facebook. We're very active in social media. We, our Facebook likes, our impressions, as I said, every post that we do is boosted. The average number of Evanston boosted posts per month is 21. We spend $50 per boosted post. So that is, the annual spend is $12,600 on just Evanston boosted posts. We have 42 blogs. We have, we have three blogs a month, and we include about 42 Evanston businesses in our blogs and our newsletters every month. Instagram, we have 26,300 followers. We also boost on there because through Meta, you boost on Facebook and Instagram at the same time. We have a newsletter that goes out to 15,384 people a month. Again, I talked about our blogs. We do have two printed pieces. We have a map and guide and our Explore Chicago North Shore Guide. We don't, we mainly distribute those to groups. We don't, we really don't distribute them to hotels anymore. They don't want them since COVID, but we give them to groups. And then our data that Paul was talking about is through Tourism Economics, which is a division of Oxford Economics, and they use cellphone data. And that's like the last two pages of the packet. And we can tell where people are coming from, where people are going to in Evanston, and then what other Evanston businesses are they visiting when they go to a certain neighborhood. So we can also see how many people that are going to Old Orchard are coming to downtown Evanston. It's very interesting data. It's all the way then, Paul. And then it also tells us where, what city they're coming from, what state they're coming from, their demographics. So this steers now all of our advertising. Yeah, this. So we pull this all the time for the different merchant districts. We have different points of interest. That's what POI is, Points of Interest in Evanston. And so we can give to different merchant districts, to individual businesses. We, they can see where their people are coming from, what else they're visiting, what, they're visiting a certain place. So on top on the left is downtown Evanston. Well, where else did they go on that exact same visit? This takes out residents. It takes out students at Northwestern. It is true just visitors, and that's how it's different than Placer. So we can do this year over year, month over month, and we share this with the businesses, and they love this because we and they never had this kind of data before.
So hold on, we're going to
That's still five minutes, right?
We have four minutes and 22 seconds, but here's how you're going to use them. Good job, everybody. We did it. We've come to the end of the giant reel in Anderson's office. So we're going to take a pause during which time the YouTube machine can reset itself, and when we resume, you will in fact have four minutes and 22 seconds left. Okay, at 10:56 PM, the City Council resumes its meeting. Councilmember Sufferton has the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Gina, when you said, like, we shared this information with businesses, does that come from the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, or does that go through our economic development team?
No, I share it with them.
Okay, and does, Paul, you get that too? Like?
Well, no, they'll call me, like, you know, here's a great example. Hilton Garden Inn, this past January, had, like, a humongous increase in visitors. And so we looked at the data, and we saw that the top performing state state was California and San Jose, and then we were able to backtrack it to an area conference that wasn't even in Evanston that that was software-related, that people all stayed here. But they called with that question, looked at the data, compared January 2024, saw, saw that the place of origin was completely unique and different and a one-off. But like, no one knew what it was from because the conference didn't take place here.
Okay, so like if you, or sorry, Paul.
So I just want to clarify, there are often times when a developer or maybe somebody's interested in opening a hotel in Evanston, they'll reach out to me to to ask for some of this data, so I have to interface with CVB to get it because it is
It's their data, right?
Correct. Yeah, but it's shared with us that, so that I can share with the developers.
Got it. And so you, you're able to make connections, or like the example that you gave, I mean, you're able to put things together like that and use that information in the assistance of Evanston businesses?
Yeah, I mean, really importantly, some of our points of interest are downtown, like Grant Park and Soldier Field. So everyone's always been curious, how much do we get when Taylor Swift is here or NASCAR? And now we can compare that point of interest and see how many, what percentage of them went to that point of interest, the main one being like Soldier Field, and then we can see where they went out of our points of interest. We never were able to do that before. We were guessing.
Like using the NASCAR race as an example, you're able, you're, you don't have to just make the leap that increased traffic is a result of the NASCAR race. You you can demonstrate that people were at the race site and came back, came to Evanston then.
Right.
Okay, cool. All right, cool. That is all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Just picking up on that, the, was it, is there a point of interest outside of Evanston that we have data for? Because I didn't, I don't see
No, yeah, I mean, I just pulled sample reports. But it is interesting because you don't realize how many people stay here that go to Ravinia, or how many, I think a lot of municipalities, just think of their municipality. They don't realize that there's destination drivers that are not there. We have Wrigley Field as a point of interest. You can totally see how many people come here and stay here.
Provided in our packet, but you say you have access.
It's not your provided, because I have 50 points of interest. And again, some of them are downtown, some of them are O'Hare. I think we have Six Flags because people stay here. We can really now see who's coming here and who's not. And again, how many people go to, like, for example, a lot of people that go to Old Orchard, that the Old Orchard report has downtown Evanston as its top point of interest on the right side. side.
And then, Paul, quick, quick question. Is, is this similar to kind of technology that Placer AI has as well? It seems similar, if not the same, the same way they're doing their thing is...
Correct. It's aggregated mobile phone data. I mean, Gina can explain it better than I can, but it's somehow optimized to only include visitors to the region versus everybody. Placer does every, whoever's here doing the thing.
No, they could do that too. They just do it by, you know, like, if your phone is in Evanston at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM on a regular basis, you live in Evanston. It's that kind of thing. So they can do that as well.
Right. I think the difference, if you can correct me, is, go ahead, just...
Yeah. We have a time period. So, you know, it's, we, it takes out people that work here, but it also takes out people that are just passing through. I mean, so they really have honed it so that we're only looking at visitors, people from outside of the area.
Yeah. And so I have some other questions. The first thing I want to say is thank you for doing all of this. And I know this technology, maybe you just got access to, but in our conversations in Economic Development Committee have been focused in what we're discussing today, which is we had a desire to see more metrics, to know whether or not what this organization is doing is working. And now I think we have exactly what we've been looking for. So I just want to say thank you for responding to those requests. And so just had a few questions. Let me start at the top. So the four, the, oh, sorry, here we go. So the leads, 472, is that, is that handoff from one person to the next? Is that, does that include, like, digital advertising?
No, those are, no. Those 472 leads are my salesperson getting a lead at a trade show from a call, from a site inspection, from a familiarization trip where we fly meeting planners here. And they have to have real data. They have to have a real meeting that has a real date and that they're really gonna consider us. Like, we don't even go to trade shows that are not in our, like, we can only have meetings of up to 500 people. We really have, most of our meetings come from the Midwest. So we really, we don't send leads to hotels unless it's a valid piece of business.
And I think what we either saw before, or at least your organization had access to, was the number of leads. I think what we haven't had before is how many were booked. And so from that, now we know 58.
And it changes every year.
Yeah. And I think to Councilmember Sufferton's question earlier, I think the way, of course, the bureaus is definitely driving the 472 number. I would say 58 too, because just classic sales, the better the lead, the more likely, you know, you are to close. And so I think that's the, we need to, we need to pay attention to this number to know how good the leads are, in my opinion. And, okay, so economic impact versus, can you explain again how you arrived at both economic impact, but also approximate annual spend of meetings? Because I mean, that's, that's a nice looking number there. So what, how did you arrive at that? And then what is that, what do these dollar amounts mean? Is it, people are spending that amount in Evanston?
Yes. So Destinations International, which is our governing body, have an economic impact calculator. And they have bureaus from the size of Chicago to a one-person CVB downstate Illinois. And so depending on your size of a city, where you're located, how many people you have in your town, how many hotels you have, what your average daily rate is, they have figured out how much people spend, you know? So depending on the daily rate, so they know people have to eat, they know that some people drive, they know that some people shop, and they come up with an economic impact of what that person, what that daily spend is. And we know how long that group's here for. So it includes the hotel room and includes anything that a visitor would spend. It does not take into SIC codes that are not part of tourism. It's only legitimate what a visitor spends.
And just to kind of double back on what I said before, the, even if the number of leads sent to Evanston goes down, I would love to see the number of leads booked go up because it means we're getting better at identifying good leads, good, strong leads for our hotels. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more context on that.
Yes, but it's also important to note, each hotel has a big sales team, and they're outselling. And what they count on us to do is to make people want to come to Evanston. Because a Hilton is a Hilton is a Hilton. They're not coming just to that hotel. They have to say, they want to be convinced why they should come here. And the hotels really rely on us to market the destination.
So I guess, I guess this is actually a question I should ask you. Which one of these numbers should we expect to go up then? Is it, you want to get better at the amount of leads, leave it up to the hotels to close, and you say, look, next year, or next time you come back, whenever that is, we want to go from 472 to 600 leads? Or what, how are you thinking about this?
Well, I think things are going to be really different because, or better, because we did, with our county funding, do a study with James, with Jones Lang LaSalle. And on July 25th, all our hotels are meeting to see the results. So we commissioned a study to see, now that COVID's over, where should we be going? Corporate business is probably never coming back to what it was. What should replace it? How should we, how should we, what markets do our hotels want us to concentrate on? We're incremental business to their salespeople. So on July 25th, we're all getting the results of that meeting, and we already have some previews. So I think we're adding a person in our sales. We're going to be doing some more data mining with our extra money. And we're going to be making some changes into what we're going after based on what their final study is. I mean, they've been working on it for 18 months, and July 25th is our big meeting to see what we're going to do with that data and how we're going to change our processes too at the Bureau.
Okay. I have one more question, but just, I'm gonna schedule some time where you and I can talk further about this. But what I do want to say is, is I would love for you to come back to us and, whether formal or not, through email, that's fine, and just say, like, what does success look like for you next year? Because I want to know, at least from the Bureau, I may have my own expectations of what, what numbers should go up or down on this, but I want to know from the Bureau, like, what is, now that we have this information, metrics over the last previous 12 months, what does next year look like for the Bureau? What are, what are your targets for next year? I don't need an answer now, but I'm just curious. Because I want to know that, that you have targets, that you're planning to, next year to do better than you did this year in certain areas. And I want to know from you, what are those areas? And again, don't need to know now, but that's, that's just a question that I have. I did want to talk about websites, because I know you can also, I want to make sure you're also using the website as a way for people to book, you know, conferences or whatever at hotels. And so they have that, the ability to do that. Because I know you talked about some of it is lost because people go to the website, and maybe they book on their own, which could happen, whether you have a link to book on the website or not. But I want to make sure there is a way that people can book hotels online that you could also track, or not at the moment.
Well, people book hotels online, and they go to the hotel website.
Not on the website.
They book through the hotel.
Not on the bureau's website.
No, because the hotels don't want that. And you can't book a meeting online. People have so many specifics. Their RFPs are like 30 pages. You can't book that online. But we do get leads online that go to my salesperson that calls them the next day.
How many people are clicking a link that directs them to a hotel?
Yes.
Well, that directs them specifically to the, to a link, you know, the link on a hotel's website to book conferences, is what I'm saying. That you could have a link that they end up right there.
Yeah, they do.
You should be able to track that, is my point.
Yeah, we do. We track how many people go to the hotels as a leisure visitor, and then they go to the hotels with meeting space because there they have all the specs of each hotel's meeting space.
But what I'm saying is you could have a link on your website that only directs people to a page on a hotel's website to book conferences or meeting space.
We linked directly to the hotel, but nobody books that through...
They don't have to book it, but we'll talk, we'll talk.
Yes, yes.
We'll talk offline. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are still here at 11:10. I just want to point out that this was passed unanimously or recommended unanimously at the Economic Development Committee meeting a few weeks ago. That vote included business owners who stood on the committee. That vote did not include the SSA directors, who are ex officio members of the committee. I forget if all three of them were there, or maybe just two, but, you know, we did receive their unofficial endorsement in support of this request, yeah, since they were not official voting members. So I'm in support of doing this, $82,000. I think we get more than our money's worth out of this, and this is an investment in Evanston businesses downtown and elsewhere that need whatever help we can provide. So I'm ready to vote in favor of this. Thanks.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Nusma. Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton. Councilmember Ravel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
I'm, I'm here. Councilmember Harris is here.
Councilmember Harris.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the funding is approved.
Thank you.
And now on item AP 1, Councilmember Herakaris.
I move approval of AP 1, approval of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Is there a second? Councilmember Herakaris moves approval of three appointments to boards, commissions, committees. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I pulled this off because I really felt compelled to address this here at council. A good number of us on council were really, I just have to say, you know, found it distressing that two incredibly respected commissioners had asked to be reappointed and that you had turned them down. In fact, a majority of us wrote a letter to you asking you, imploring you to please reappoint them. We're at this, you know, crucial phase of devising a new comprehensive plan and zoning code, and both of these women have just such profound expertise. We've been so fortunate to have them serve and that they wanted to serve again. So, again, and it has nothing to do with the other folks that you want to appoint, but that these two women wouldn't be reappointed by you really was cause for deep concern. And that's why, again, a majority of us did write to you to say, please consider reappointing them. It also sends a message. I mean, you know, when people commit, volunteer their time like this, and their expertise, and bring them to boards, committees, and commissions, then to, you know, offer to continue and then to be told no. And I do appreciate that you did, you know, you know, kind of compromise and agree to appoint one of them. Jean Linwall, who I'm very pleased that she will, is going to be appointed. But nevertheless, Christine Westerberg is also of outstanding, you know, expertise. And I'm glad to see Chair Rogers is here this evening, and I wouldn't mind, I mean, I think anybody can attest, and could you please confirm that their thoroughness on that commission? I mean, the amount that they study and prepare, like, I mean, is just astounding. I mean, they really do stand out. Could, could you, could you just speak to that a little bit? I'm, thank you. And I'd also like to know, were you consulted and...
I actually found out when an alderman, our council member, excuse me, reached out to me about this. And I spoke with both Jean and Chris that evening, because it was on a Wednesday, so we had a meeting that evening. And so I spoke with both of them. I was not consulted on this. The mayor and I have talked on a few, but we did not speak on this one. But I, I sort of advocated for them. I'm a big advocate for the land use commission, as most of you probably know. I think we're the best commission. We have a unique space in the city in the fact that our decisions are not appealable to city council. We make recommendations on special uses, buildings over certain heights, planned developments, and parking. But if you want to build your garage and you need a variation for that, we make that determination, and it, it stands unless someone wants to take it to Circuit Court. So having people on the, on the commission who are, who are strong advocates, who are knowledgeable people, who understand planning and zoning, by the fact that we've combined land use commission into two, two separate bodies into one, is kind of interesting to see where we, I have much more of a zoning background than a planning background. These people, Jean and Chris have both worked on, on plan commission for longer, and Jean actually has, has worked with the city decades. I made the joke with her, she was talking about, you know, well, the first plan was not done by Daniel Burnham. And I said, well, she was probably there to attest to that fact. So, but yeah, so I just, I just think that's very important that as we move forward, looking at people for commissions, and in particular land use, which I'm very passionate about, is to make sure that we are finding people. And, and I don't, I don't, this is again, not a representation of the people who are being asked to join or anything like that, but that people who do come are people who are knowledgeable, have a passion for it, because that's not something you always find.
Thank you very much. And again, I just want to reiterate again, during this crucial phase of revising in the middle of our comprehensive plan and zoning code, to, not to jump at renewing both of these women's requests to serve a second term, I just think is misguided. And I would love to have the opportunity to have more discussion and to see this held, though I'm not, you know, kind of hold my breath on that, but I, I really think it merits more discussion. I think to understand the deep expertise and the fact that a majority of this council really wanted to see these, out of respect to the council too, both of these women reappointed, and also, you know, to understand, I mean, not, I don't always agree with both these, these commissioners. I know Chair Rogers doesn't always agree with them. It's not about that. It's about respecting their expertise and their continued service, particularly at this time.
There's several other people in line to speak, but I am gonna take the chair's prerogative to respond to this, because I feel really compelled to do so. And I just have to start by saying I regret that we're having this conversation in public because, in fact, what we're talking about is not two, but four terrific residents, all of whom who raised their hand to say, I want to serve, I want to volunteer, I want to help. And what I hope we can do from up here is honor and appreciate and be positive about all of the many talented people in this community who raise their hand in service. And so I feel uncomfortable as though we're sort of having a conversation that seems to put one above the other. That said, I'm gonna, I want to first explain how I even came to begin thinking about this question, and then think about the question itself. So, how do I begin thinking about the question? Actually, frankly, this body had some influence. You yourself made a referral to get rid of term limits on boards, committees, and commissions. One thing that I discussed when we were talking about that was I said, you know, hey, if we were to do this, I would certainly not treat reappointments as automatic in the way that I historically have been, which would probably be a good thing anyway. And then that referral wound up not passing because this council said, we want more turnover. We don't want to extend term limits. So I felt like there was a signal coming from council that was interested in increasing turnover on boards, committees, and commissions. Additionally, I think it has to be said that there is some concerns, and I'm not speaking specifically at all about the land use commission here. There's concerns about boards, committees, and commissions across the board and needed areas of improvement. For instance, we had in tonight's packet, a letter from the Preservation Commission on an important issue. Their input on that issue is welcome and appreciated, but it was full of points that were well beyond their purview, points about finance and budget and access for individuals with disabilities and so forth. That's a pretty good illustration of some challenges that we're seeing across boards and committees and commissions, of mission creep and kind of jurisdictional disputes and fights about purview. All that stuff is going on across the system, and there's a variety of other challenges as well that have made me feel, even beyond the conversation that happened up here about the question of repealing term limits, I felt like, hey, we need to have more turnover, we need to have more change. And as a result, I made the decision that I would not be treating appointments as effectively, reappointments, I should say, as effectively automatic. It is absolutely the case that historically, both during the early, the first years of my term, as well as, as I'm told from my predecessors, reappointments were treated as effectively automatic. I don't think that's an appropriate course of action going forward. And I felt that that was kind of consistent with what the signal council sent about wanting more turnover. So that, that's what brought me to this decision. And so we had four applicants for these two roles. And I want to again say that I'm personally grateful to all four of the excellent applicants, and that any decision between them was really a matter of taste. They're all good, capable, talented people who deserve our thanks for being willing to serve. In talking with all four of them, in thinking about the comprehensive planning process that is so critical for the city, where I've expressed several times my passion about making sure that we go big, I just felt like I was going to kind of err on the side of people who were more ambitious about change and more open to change. And again... side of people who were more ambitious about change and more open to change. And again, this is not, this is not a negative comment about anybody. This is human nature. You might imagine that the folks who I spoke to who are not yet serving on the commission were, by comparison with those who have served on the commission since its inception and served on the plan commission for quite a while before that, the, the potential new applicants were, were just a little bit more change forward, let's say. And there are sound reasons why someone might say experience and excellent service should be prioritized over being kind of maximally excited about change. And there are reasons on the other side of that argument. And I came down on the, let's shake things up because this is such an important time for the land use commission to be optimistic about change side. And I made those two appointments, not thinking that we'd find ourselves here, frankly. And what I got quickly was, you described part of what I got quickly. I got backlash from some, some council members for sure. I also got support from some council members. Some council members proactively called me and said, this is really exciting. We support this. We agree with this. And I thought, hey, there's strong feelings on both sides, and there's two vacancies. What a fortuitous situation that we can, I had a very helpful meeting with council members Revelle and Winn, who were on your side of this issue, who were really passionate about the positive service of the two women who had applied for reappointment and were concerned about the decision. And we met, and I said, well, listen, would it, would it give you comfort if one of the two were reappointed in, in recognition of the importance of experience and one of the new people were appointed in recognition of the importance of change? And that's what brings us here today. And I will tell you, calling a person who raised his hand to serve, who had an interview with me, who after thinking that interview over, I called and said, I want to appoint you, and then saying, never mind, the support wasn't there, the council was even more excited about a different applicant, I'm going to have to pull your application, was not my favorite thing to do as mayor. I, it was not a, 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 a great phone call. But I would implore you, in the strongest possible terms, don't then, for the other person who raised their hand to serve, who interviewed in the process, who was told that they would be selected, and who emerged from this kind of, let's split the difference and try to find something for everyone resolution, as the person who then appeared on the agenda with, with support of members of council who'd been on both so-called sides of this issue, please don't then tell that person, oh, never mind, to you also, we're gonna, we're gonna vote your appointment down or delay the, the vote. I just think that's not a way to be respectful of community members who are offering their time and their expertise and their passion to make the community better. And so my, I'm sorry this has been very long, but I, I really wanted to be extremely transparent, both about how we got here and about my thought process, and to implore you guys in the strongest possible terms, now that we've reached a meeting in the middle point, now that I've been willing to, to, of the two appointments, change my position on one, in order to show respect and deference to the fact that councils divide on this, let's move forward with that and not, not shake things up in a way that, that's, I think, even more, frankly, disrespectful of just excellent community volunteerism.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Reed.
Before I was in office, I was an advocate in Evanston, advocate, concern, resident, et cetera. I would say I was on the losing side of, of more issues than I was on the winning side of. And I know as I, and others, advocates, tried to find a way to influence city government and make an impact here in Evanston, we, we tried to get on boards, commissions, committees. And, and I know while I was making those attempts and others were, we were denied those opportunities in many cases, and never really even given a, a reason why. And hopefully, we've, we've corrected that, that if somebody applies, we send a note to them to say, hey, we, you know, didn't move forward with you, you know, and maybe even a little more information. But at the time, you wouldn't even know until, until this type of meeting, where, when a decision was made, and then you would know you, you weren't selected. We need to do better when it comes to who is representing, who's, who's providing, who represents our board committees and commissions. And we're not there yet. And to me, Councilmember Kelly's referral, but also, you know, these automatic reappointments, to me suggests that we've arrived at a place where we have the type of representation we would like to see, and we don't. And we probably absolutely don't on the land use commission. I'm curious, how many renters, how many lower-income residents, how many African-Americans, how many people of color, generally speaking. I can speak as an African-American and say, that alone doesn't necessarily matter, but being black and from Evanston or having experiences in Evanston does matter. Because it's, 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 the, the context is that Evanston is a very segregated place, and so it means that you likely have some interaction, whether you live there, worship there, have friends there. You have a relationship with the African-American, with African-American neighborhoods, which means that over the years, you've been exposed to zoning. That's a lot more flexible than in other areas in Evanston, which has a direct relationship with how you view, how you may view the comprehensive zoning, you know, discussion that we're having now, that I know the, the land use commission is going to weigh in on it. It doesn't have maybe a binding role, but it's going to weigh in on, on, on those questions. And other very important questions, some binding, as, as, as you mentioned, and others where it provides a heavy weight. I mean, how many times have we been up here and, and whether it's the media or a council member says, oh, well, the land use commission voted on this unanimously. And to, and to, to go against the land use commission is an affront to everything that's, that's, come on, you know that happens all the time. So even when it's not binding, there's this heavy weight that's given to decisions that come out of the land use commission, which to me says that we have to make sure that all of our commissions in particular, but also our committees are representative of Evanston. And I don't think they are. I know they're not today. And so I, I want to applaud the mayor. I think one of the applicants was an African-American man. Again, that in and of itself doesn't say everything. I'd have to know more about him. But I applaud his effort in, in trying to find ways to give other people opportunities because, just because you have, just because you've served several terms does not mean you're more thorough. You know, thorough and, and the amount of terms that you serve, it's not, it doesn't go hand in hand. You could say that they may have more institutional knowledge than someone else, but you can't say they're more thorough. You know, I'm, I'm incredibly thorough and never served on the land use commission, but if I were provided an opportunity at, at some point, I would be just as thorough as anybody else. I may not have the institutional knowledge, but that can be gained. But it's only gained when given the opportunity. And so if, if, if our standard is always going to be, well, because they have the institutional knowledge or whatever it is, like, we, they just automatically get appointed, we're never going to provide an opportunity for someone else to gain that experience and, and to show how their, how their qualities and skill set could benefit a commission. And I also want to say, whether they're thorough or not, some people's lived experience, because it's so absent, to me may hold weight, a little bit more weight over somebody that may be more thorough than them. Maybe they're thorough enough, but also bring a lived experience as, that's, you know, is, as important or maybe more important. So this is, I'm kind of surprised in the way that council has reacted to this because, as Councilmember Kelly said, it seems like other people, other council members kind of rallied behind this. But I, I just want to be very clear where I stand. We need to do a better job of representation, so much so that if it requires us to even provide a stipend, you know, for a land use commi, maybe land use commissioners exclusively, I will be willing to have those conversations because we need to do a better job, and we're not there yet.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton.
Yeah, I, I just also want to echo what Councilmember Burns said there and one, and what Mayor Biss said. I appreciate the four, the four residents who stepped forward to serve the city. And I, I am, I guess I'm not really surprised, to be honest, necessarily that we're having this discussion. But it is unfortunate that we would, would have this in, in public. But I think we should move forward with the recommendation here. Not only, you know, one, I appreciate, I became aware of this when Matt Rogers, Chair Rogers, who's an eighth warder, reached out about it. And, you know, I wanted to get an understanding. And when the decision was explained to me, I was excited. I think it, it, you know, it makes sense for us to add diversity. And so I want to say thank you to the mayor for hearing council, for hearing those of us who are seeking to add more diversity. And diversity, certainly racial, gender diversity, but diversity of thought, diversity of approach. And I think that's important. And my understanding is, one of the folks who may not be on the committee was an eighth warder and someone who is committed to sustainability. And I think, as the mayor noted, you know, it is important that we add that diversity of thought, that diversity of approach to especially the land use commission during our envisioned 2045 process. And so I'm glad we're here. I'm hoping that as we move forward, that we can, you know, more boldly move forward with diverse candidates and, as I said, diversity in all of its various shades. Thank you, Mayor Biss, and I urge a yes vote.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Thank you. So I understand the timing. And I don't discount the unpleasantness of the conversation you had. But it's been, has it been your practice to tell people they're appointed and it's going to get approved before you've checked? And I get, I get the awkwardness of the situation, but I mean, how, how did that work?
I don't tell them they're going to get approved. I tell them the truth, which is that I've appointed them, that I'll forward their names to council and that they'll be on the agenda. I also tell them that historically, those have all been approved without discussion. But no, I don't, I don't make any inaccurate representation.
Okay. I'm sorry that you had to have that conversation. That's tough.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Kelly with two minutes left.
Thank you. So I fully agree about seeking diversity and lived experience. Absolutely. What we're speaking to tonight is genuinely this outstandingly thorough approach of these two women. And I don't know if you've watched many of them, I mean, I assume you have, but I mean, they really do stand out. And that's why we spoke to them, because they really do go above and beyond and are amazing. And they're, we shared their, you know, resumes and background also with Daniel, in case you haven't seen them. I mean, their backgrounds are incredible. And the amount of time that they dedicated, I mean, to watch them, their line of questioning. It was about these women and what they really, they really are. And like I said, outstandingly thorough, not just thorough, and, and again, we're looking at a second term. So that's what this was about, speaking to them and what they bring, the wealth of knowledge they bring. And, and I agree, like, big ideas are good as long as they're coupled, particularly on the land use commission, with understanding and background. You don't just want big ideas. It has to be coupled with some, it's very complicated. I'm amazed when I watch the land use discussions. And so big ideas are great, but not in a void of having some, you know, expertise and understanding. So, so I just wanted to clarify that that is, I believe, where we are all coming from, the five of us that submitted that letter, was high respect for these two women and that we felt we were very fortunate to have them on our commission and volunteer to serve a second term. So.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember, Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Oh, Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the three appointments are approved. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Herakaris.
I'm very excited to announce that next Wednesday on the 17th, we will be having a ninth ward meeting at the South End Community Center. We will have director, deputy directors from Parks and Rec and EPD there. Hope everyone can make it. There'll also be a hybrid option for people who can't be there in person. Seven o'clock.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
No report.
Councilmember Nusma.
No report.
Councilmember Burns.
I'll start with just clarifying the, the point I just made, and I want to make sure it's clear that I have, I, I think it is, I have not necessarily observed enough land use commissions to understand how thorough the two women are who sought reappointments. And they may be thorough, incredibly thorough, and I'm not questioning that at all. And, and, and I think, your name escapes me, I'm sorry, and I know who you are, but it's late, Matt. And I think you're doing your job, too. I want to be clear on this. I think you advocating for members of the commission who you feel are doing a really good job. The commission is doing some really important work in the next several, well, now continues to do, and will even more important work, I think, in the next few months with the, the zoning conversation. I think you, you play the role that you were supposed to play as chair to make sure that you have the team you need to, to, to do the duty that you're called to do. That being said, I, I, so it's not, so I think everybody's playing their role. I think my role, especially with my experiences here in Evanston, is to, is to advocate in the way that I just did and to send a clear message to our mayor who is in charge of recommending people to make sure he understands that I don't think he did anything wrong. Because what, and, and maybe, maybe where there can be an area of improvement, if this didn't happen, is maybe there could be more communication. It sounds like there usually is, but maybe moving forward, there's more communication between you and the mayor on appointments. Because I think there's a way to, I know there's a way to add more diversity to our commissions and committees, but identify people who have all the characteristics and qualities that you expressed, and also, Councilmember Kelly, that you expressed, that those two things are mutually exclusive. And we hear that weaponized a lot, especially when it comes to people of color, like, oh, well, they have to be experienced and they have to be thorough. And they, well, we are, right? We, we're thorough also, right? We'll go above and beyond also. I think even in just how I've represented myself, I can speak for everybody, I am incredibly thorough. And I think I've shown that in the way that, that, that I conduct myself as council member, although some may have thought that I wouldn't have been as thorough or more, or as vocal as I am. So again, we have to give people the opportunity to show that they're, they can, they can do the job as well as anybody else. But I just wanted you to, to know that I'm not, I don't think you did anything wrong. I just, you know, I needed to advocate. I wanted to signal to the mayor that he didn't do anything wrong, so he doesn't stop doing that. Because that's what could come from this. It's like, all right, well, let me, you know, let me not push the envelope. And I think we, we still need to push the envelope when it comes to how we select committee, committee members and commissioners for these opportunities. In terms of the dog ramp, I also just wanted to, to clarify this because I ran out of time. And so I didn't have the, an opportunity to clarify kind of my, why I made the motion to table it in a way that I was able to do with Bob Seidenberg for the roundtable. But, and I checked with Laura on this, I don't think we ever heard during this process, and she agrees, anyone say that distance was a concern. I don't think that, 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 that has only come up in the last two weeks. And so I just want to be very clear, that's what did it for me. I, I was going through all the emails, like, yeah, this, this is not really convincing, this isn't really convincing. But when I heard from people who are living the experience of being disabled in the community, people who are going to use the ramp, not only through email, but here today at the podium, say, it's too far, it's probably too far, y'all. I mean, and it's, we should have caught it early. I, I don't know how we didn't. I know one reason is because it, it has not, it has only come up recently. And so I'll put that on us as a council. I, I talked to Laura earlier. I, I walked out and I said, I want you to know that I'm not blaming you or staff at all. I don't think you did anything wrong. I think it was on us. Somehow, we missed that. But I think we, we have heard from the, from the community that's going to use the ramp that it's too far. And from, you know, looking up, talking to Councilmember Kelly and looking at Matt's views, you know, the, the, the cul-de-sac and the turnaround and the parking, like, none of that is really heavily utilized to where we can't figure out how to use it in a way that still supports our community that votes and also have a few spaces, ADA spaces. It, it's, it's not going to be an issue. I can guarantee it because it's not heavily utilized. And it's a big enough area, too, that if we need to expand it in certain areas, I even saw that we can do that, too, because there's, there's some trees that aren't as mature. And so if we need to relocate those to... we need to relocate those, to maybe adjust the driveway, to add parking here, we can do it. There's enough opportunity there to where I think we have to pursue shortening, dramatically shortening that distance that people have to walk to access this ADA ramp. So I just wanted to clarify that, and that is all. Thank you.
Councilmember Suffertin has left. Councilmember Revel?
Well, I just want to alert everyone to Saturday, July 20th, 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., we're going to be honoring Larry Suffertin, unveiling his honorary street name sign, and all are very welcome. This is gonna be on Pioneer Road, just south of Lincoln, opposite Quinlan Park, and so everybody should come and thank Larry for his many years of terrific service. And then the following day, Sunday, July 21st, also at 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., representatives from the North Channel Community Rowing Group are going to be at the location where they're hoping to have a rowing facility, that's south of Lincoln, just west of the Lincoln Street Bridge. And so they're gonna be there to talk about the rowing program and answer questions and discuss their proposal for a rowing facility. So all, neighbors in particular are very welcome.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, and I promise this will be about 30 seconds, but I just, I really want us, you know, we had a conversation tonight about our, their Land Use Commission, and I do want us to remember that our zoning code is not the third laws of thermodynamics, it's not, you know, it's not rocket science, it is human invention. And there's no reason that someone off the street that is a resident of Evanston shouldn't be able to walk into the space and be a contributing, meaningful member. And I think that if, the longer that we think about, you know, our zoning code, and this stuff is, you know, this really dense, complex stuff, which it is, we've made it that way, but it doesn't have to be, and I think by having a diversity of experiences and voices in our committees, we will begin to, you know, really create it in a way that is meaningful to more people. And I think that first step is making sure that we're not presenting it in a way that makes folks feel like they can operate in the space, because we make it seem more complex than what it really ought to be. And so, and I do want us to watch that language sometimes that we use when we discuss, you know, things like zoning, and it feels exclusionary. And so that's it, that's my soapbox. And ward meeting last Thursday of the month, I'm sure Ray Friedman is still listening somewhere, or will be, at 6:30, we've always held it then, so looking forward to folks joining us this month, and I will announce guests at our next meeting. Thank you.
And now, considering that we have literally run out of things to say, at 11:43 p.m., the July 8th meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned. Good night, everybody.